Okay. Sarah practices singing at St. Patrick's Church in the children's choir with Carol Martin, director of music, and Alessandra Disienzo, who's the organ player, the pianist, and she's looking forward to joining the choir next fall. Sarah is a bongo and bell player at church, and she's been playing the piano for two years in the Music for Young Children program. Sarah also takes ballet, plays soccer, takes swimming lessons, enjoys reading, likes art, arts and crafts, and loves to fish. Do you take the fish off the hook, too? Ooh. Sarah especially loves to kiss the fish she catches. Sarah is a first grader at Mary Ward Elementary, so welcome Sarah. Uh, next up is Patrick. Where's Patrick? Okay, right in the middle. Patrick's been singing at St. Patrick's Church in the children's choir for two years, and he's been playing the piano for four years. He's won first-place awards in the Stanford and St. Catherine's Kiwanis Music Festivals. In addition to music, Patrick also plays AAA novice hockey for Southern Tier Admirals, Southern Tier Admirals. He plays travel rookie baseball with the GNBA, takes swimming lessons, plays racket sports, and loves to fish and golf. Patrick is a third grader at Mary Ward Elementary School. And then, last but not least, we've got Stephen. Right, Stephen? All right. Stephen's been singing at St. Patrick's Church as well in the children's choir for five years, and he's been playing the piano for seven years. He's won distinguished awards for his piano, including ORMTA Niagara Falls Branch Competition winner in 2017, first-place awards and scholarships with the Stanford and St. Catherine's Kiwanis Music Festivals, and the Port Colborne Festival of the Arts, and the Most Promising Canadian Student in Piano Performance by the Stanford Kiwanis Music Festival. In addition to music, Stephen also plays AA minor pathway hockey for the Niagara Falls Flyers. He plays travel soccer with the Niagara Falls Titans. He takes swimming lessons. He plays racket sports and golf, and he loves to fish and to read. Stephen is a sixth grader at Mary Ward Elementary School, and you know, I really feel sorry for your parents or your taxi drivers because it sounds like you're very, very busy. But we're really excited to have, this is the first time that I know that we've ever had three people sing the National Anthem, so we're all ready whenever you are.
One, two, three, go. Oh, Canada, je veux de nos ailleurs. Ton froid et sain de fleurs glorieuses. Quatre bras, c'est porter le paire. Il se porte la voix. Ton histoire ne tue le peuple. Des flouvres en six trois. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, folks, there you have the Von Babbins. Thanks very much, kids. That was a great job. Thank you. That's awesome. Okay, first order of business is the adoption of the minutes from our April 25 meeting. Moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Morocco. Councilor Aiononi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't here, but before we ratify these minutes, I just want to have myself down as opposed to the order of the motion of Councilor Morocco, seconded by Thompson, that staff bring back a report regarding regionalizing fire services. I think that's a very bad idea, and I'd like the vote opposed to that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or corrections? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay? And they are passed. The disclosures of a pecuniary interest. If you have any disclosures. Yes, Councilor Carrillo?
Thank you, Your Worship. On MW 2017-18, the Morningstar Road Access and Road Reconstruction. I'm a neighbor. I have property on Morningstar Road and on the OLG Projects Recommended for Funding, the one for the Winter Festival of Lights. I'm a director on the Parks Commission, which could benefit from money given by the city to the Festival of Lights, and on the Fallsview Boulevard Engineering Design. I own property on Fallsview Boulevard.
We've got those, Mr. Clerk?
And for the same reason, also being a fellow Niagara Parks Commissioner with Councilor Carrillo, if anything does come up on the Festival of Lights, I do have to declare conflict as well. We received this legal advice today, so to be safe. If there's no further disclosures, uh, next item, we're gonna move, we're gonna jump ahead a little bit here to apologize to everybody. We were late downstairs with an in-camera meeting, but we're gonna have to move things a little bit, so being respectful of the people that are here, we're gonna start off and move down to budget matters. Uh, that's item one. F 2017-19, the OLG Funding Report. Now, I know, Mr. Harrison, he's available to give us a presentation if we so desire, or unless council wants to move forward with the recommendations that staff have made in council. Yes, Councilor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, Your Worship, I'd be happy to move the report that's in front of us. I think there's just over $4 million. That's, that's our, our last quarter take from the OLG that we're able to spend. It's nice to see that there's a lot of projects in here. I think Mr. Harrison did the old Johnny Appleseed again, just kinda spread the money out over every department and make everyone a little bit happy, but some of them are really nice on here, Your Worship. There's the Winter Festival of Lights, there's the Riverview Park redevelopment that, that is finally gonna be going through. There's the McBane Center HVAC upgrades, which we, which we all know are well-needed. There's replacement of fire trucks, and there's a bunch of other little projects on there, Your Worship, so I'd be happy to move it.
Okay, seconded by Councilor Thompson. Speak to it? Yes, then Councilor?
Yes, uh, two projects that I'm extremely pleased to see, the Riverview Park.
Yes.
Uh, a lot of money, but I think we're gonna save money in the final analysis. And one that might seem rather insignificant, but people have been waiting for probably three years for this to happen. A little laneway in between Second and Third Avenue to the, I guess it would be the south of McCray Street, no, the north of McCray Street. A little laneway where the people have not been able to drive up to get in the back of their property to the, their garages because of the potholes. It was supposed to be done two or three years ago. It wasn't in the budget. They told, we told it was gonna be done last year. It didn't happen, and so they're gonna be very pleased and thank the staff for looking after that. Very important to those people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Aiononi and Crater?
Thank you. Does this allocate all the monies that are available for TAB 10? And I ask because I sit on the library board. I know that the CIO from the library board met with Mr. Todd and Mr. Harrison, and the $800,000, they were asked not to present tonight because staff needed more information. So I'm just kinda curious, does this take them totally out of this running, or they would've been here this evening? And does this use up all, all our funds?
Mr. Harrison?
The, uh, Mr. Mayor, the money is fully allocated. The library, uh, we, that's correct, we did meet with the library CIO, and we advised that there was more work that they had to do in regards to their request, and suggested that if they come back at a further date, you know, the, uh, the OLG funding will be there again, and will be, it's May already, and we'll be into the capital budget for next year. So certainly there will be an opportunity for them to come back.
Thank you.
I, I just want council to be, to understand, that was not the understanding the library board had. They had an understanding that while they couldn't come tonight, they could come very shortly. There were only housekeeping measures that had to be cleaned up. We've gone through that budget for this renovation over and over and over again. So that's, just so that you're clear, your library board does not understand it that way, and that library services thousands and thousands of people on that end of the city. So this is a little bit misleading.
Uh, Councilor Crater?
Um, thank you. Thank you, Worship. Couple really short, uh, short comments. One is, uh, I'm hoping that now that the province has come up with a directive that municipalities can impose, or can put in their own DMF of their own, and that's what I understood they were proposing, that we may have discussions around the table of going down that road. And then, once we do that, then we'll have the funding to cover a lot of these things that really belong, uh, to be paid for through the DMF, not through taxpayers' money. Um, for example, the Winter Festival of Lights, which I do support, and think it's great, and I know the wonderful work they do, but by having that DMF, that would give them that stable funding, you wouldn't have to count on trying to convince us or inviting us out for a coffee, a little get-together, and they really made a good presentation, but they'd have that stable funding. Our Niagara Falls Tourism, they do good work, but it should be funded by the, you know, by that, by that DMF tax, not by the property taxpayers of Niagara Falls. So I'm hoping that we, we start going down that road, um, as a city, and we've talked about, and then I'm hoping that maybe the operators will realize it's not good for business to be charging people an additional fee on top of their bill. That's not the right way to do it. I don't know, I think many of us, I know Alden, Councilor Campbell has brought it up, but I, I still get the emails from tourists who come into town. I still get them from some of my own colleagues at Queens Park, asking me, and showing me the bills that these constituents bring in. So we, we need to get, we need to somehow figure out how to get rid of that. Without tourists, there is no industry. You know, you might think, well, we lose one or two, and there's five or six more out there, but eventually, five or six more are gonna come down here if they feel that, you know, this, this industry is taking advantage of them. And I'm only repeating the things that are said to me, they're not my words. I mean, I could bring in the documents and the emails that I get from all over the place that express this concern, so I think it's just a great opportunity for us to maybe, you know, and I know you said you were meeting with them. I know Councilor Campbell was trying to go down the road to say, if you're gonna charge it, which we don't think you should, but how about not charging the residents of Niagara Falls? That's why many of them won't go down into the restaurants down there because they get the second chance. And I do know there are some major, there are some major operators who don't charge it, which is really, really nice to hear. I could list them because I've actually walked down there and started asking. I was quite impressed with the numbers that don't. So, um, it is a shame for the library, I just wanna, uh, tag along with, but I feel bad for the library because it's an essential part, and I'm sorry to see that, that it's not in here. And maybe, uh, the council could look, instead of waiting all the way till next year, maybe we could look at trying to bring that forward when we get the next quarter from the, uh, from the OLG and look at our library, because it does need work, and it is well-used. I still go out there, and there's still a lot of kids, a lot of seniors who go to the library and enjoy using it. So I'm hoping that maybe we can bring that forward when we get our next quarter. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Thompson? And also noted conflict with Councilor Carrillo, any discussion on the?
Didn't see that on the agenda, otherwise I would've declared it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Didn't see DMF on that tab?
No, it wasn't there, yeah.
Yeah, well, we're not, we're not making a, a decision on the DMF anyway at this point, so I have no problem in discussing it. Councilor Crater didn't understand it when he was the parliamentary assistant to the Minister of Tourism. Uh, the DMF, uh, the TIF, all kinds of different names, is not a tax, it's a fee. It's recommended on the government website, that you, you could've changed it when you're up there, uh, on the tourism, recommending a marketing fee for the promotion of tourism. The actual government recommends, we're in a discussion now to see what happens, and the announcement they made was, had nothing to do with the DMF, in spite of the fact that you and I are having dialogue and discussion, and there is a consensus that the local people do not want to charge local residents. I think we've made some real progress, but we're working on that. But the DMF, uh, the tax that is talked about in the budget is a tax, and it was promoted by the Mayor of Toronto, who wanted additional money for transit and other things. Has nothing to do, and there's been, we've, we've attempted, and there's been no clarification of what, how it has any bearing on what we do here, and what every major destination does to raise marketing dollars. So that's all gonna be another debate again, but one is not, one is a fee. What you hear now is a tax. So they're two different issues altogether, but with your, uh, guidance and chairmanship, we're, we're making some progress. And you're right, the number of people that don't charge any fee, uh, is substantial. Yeah, thank you.
Councilor Aiononi and Strange. Okay, Councilor Strange?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as we're talking about the tourists, and, and Kim Crater was talking about all the tourists and the dollars coming in and stuff, we had the Winter Festival of Lights volunteers here, and, and I just wanna, I congratulated a couple months ago about what a successful year. You guys have done amazing. I sat down with Tina Myers a couple weeks ago, and she did a presentation, and just amazing, all the numbers are up. In particular, all the Americans that came over, too, was, was astounding, as well as some awards that you guys were getting for, for the lights, and, uh, just amazing. So congratulations to all you guys, and Tina Myers doing an unbelievable job, volunteers down there, using, you know, the hours every day going down there, and some cold nights, I'm sure, too. So, uh, congratulations on, on the funding tonight, and keep up the great work. I don't know how you're gonna top off this year, I really don't, but, uh, congratulations.
Okay, Councilor Morocco?
Um, yes, Your Worship, I just wanna make sure that the projects, uh, in this TAB 10, uh, Riverview Park?
Yeah.
Is there, and I know that the staff has already started to work on that and help relieve, and I have to tell you, it couldn't have been a worse week for rain and creating swimming pools throughout. So, um, it threw you to, Jen, hold on please, if we just maybe have a quick update as the process, because some people are asking, and I know that there has been a lot of work going, city staff have been working there, and I guess I just wanna thank them for, you know, being there on call as much as they have been to try and keep the water from flooding into people's backyards and to their basements. So, and that's still kind of an ongoing process until this project starts, which will be when, I guess is my question.
Ms. Trowman?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, thanks, Councilor. This is, uh, going to be a major priority for us. We are waiting for the ground to firm up a little bit before we can actually get a permit on the site, but we're going through the, uh, master plan, the, the design stage. We hope to have one more public information center to make sure everybody's on board. At that time, we'll be able to be a little bit more specific with the construction schedule, but it'll likely take place over the course of the summer. Uh, hopefully, we'll have a couple of months available to enjoy some amenities we plan to put in there, but I'd like to thank the residents who have been putting up with the inconvenience and some of the drainage issues, uh, over the past winter, and, but I think they're really gonna be impressed with what we have in store.
Thank you. I'm just very grateful that we've had some dollars to actually pull out to allocate to that project and make sure we can help those residents. Will this note be actually read off so that everybody can, can know what's going to be in TAB 10 and is approved?
Uh, we could.
I think it's important that people know, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Gonna put the slide up, Mr. Harrison?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You can go through.
In fact, we have 100 people waiting to get in the room, so we'll get right to the point.
Yeah, I'll be right to the point, so just move along to the next couple of slides.
I'm just, I want people seeing.
So move to the next slide. We'll just get to the projects, I guess, that was what Councilor Morocco had talked about. So we can see that it's spread, the way we came up with the list was really quickly, uh, we had asked all the directors to rank their, their five top projects on their, on TAB 10, and, uh, so the fire radio dispatch upgrade increase, that was an approved project already. Uh, we've run into additional costs to replace the system. As you know, the system needs to be replaced, uh, and it's not being, it's not being supported. Uh, we talked about Riverview Park, $760,000. Uh, we have a, to replace one of the fire trucks, and that will, the replacement of, of putting a brand-new one in into one of the stations will then result in a truck ending up with one of the Volunteers Associations. Uh, McBane, as we talked about, this is an important part of our energy efficiency plan. Phase one is to do upgrades to the HVAC system. This is an infrastructure program, water main, road reconstruction design. Uh, the rail review is a review, as we indicated, of, to ensure we're in, in sync with the legislation. Um, we have a number of different buildings that historically have not had enough work done to them, and so Chippewa Town Hall both needs windows and doors replacement. We talked about the economic development aspect, Winter Festival of Lights, year one of their two-year project, $300,000. Roads, uh, Fallsview Boulevard and engineering design, that's required, and then Paddock Park reforetization. Uh, this is part of the, something that was talked about, about re, uh, getting the urban forest up and running, a little bit replaced. Again, we had another, in the arena, we talked about a lighting and ceiling upgrades. Again, this has got to do with, uh, energy efficiency and, and, and that thing. Uh, fire prevention, again, we touch upon, uh, something that is required. City Hall improvements, this is, we, we've invested a lot of money in City Hall. Uh, HVAC system, as you know, the cladding and the windows are being replaced. This is about a, to replace all the blinds in the building. One of the problems with the energy efficiency is that the blinds are not effective in keeping the sunlight and heat out, uh, and as a result, that's, um, a project. Next, uh, trying to go as quick as I can, council, and give each of the projects due inventory. Um, we have a, this is part of our asset management plan, that we have a adequate sign inventory in our transportation division. Obviously, fence replacement in the cemetery, this is part of an ongoing multi-year program. Millennium Trail, the design work for Section 5 and construction. Uh, as Council, Councilor Thompson talked about, the second and third laneways reconstruction. Um, we have some, some reviews of our buildings, and there are some designated substances in the buildings that need to be, uh, removed, and that's to make sure that we're in compliance with health and safety rules. Uh, again, we're back at the arena, fixing the rubber floor out at Chippewa. Truffle signal video detection, $45,000, and then at the service center, there's a, we're gonna add this to our asphalt paving contract. So $4.3 million is the final installment. Uh, this is in addition, if, just so council, uh, understands, and, and the public understands, this, this is, uh, well over $13 million that we've used of the OLG funding. We keep talking about the OLG funding as being a, a great benefit, $24 million, the highest yet of the last, uh, three, number of years, and we're be able to use $13 million to replace and rejuvenate capital projects, and we've tried to spread it out across all of the, uh, all of the operating divisions. So, Councilor, I hope that's, that covers what you wanted.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Harrison. Thank you so much. I just wanted to point out that that is a huge, uh, 20 projects off of that TAB 10. They were able to allocate dollars to and get those projects worked out, so I'm grateful and grateful that we do have the OLG money, and that is through contribution of tourism, our number-one industry. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, well, if there's no further questions, we'll call the vote, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, Councilor Campbell?
Right. Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to emphasize that I'm extremely happy with the Phase 5 of the Millennium Trail. I think the, the majority of our community is, is looking forward to that completion. Thank you.
Yeah, very much so. All right, so if there's no further questions, we'll call that vote. All those in favor, okay? And that's unanimously approved. So, thank you, congratulations, Festival of Lights, you're all set. Now we need to make room for all the kids out there. Take your time, though, take your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joyce.
Good luck. See you, Roman. Ron Tripp, that's twice today. What's going on? Did you ride your bike here? Your BMW bicycle? We gotta get one of those tandem bikes. Yeah, Mike? Mike, you wanna join me? Yeah, bring your coaches up, yeah. Come on, coaches, a bunch of coaches come and join me up here.
Marco, John, please.
Welcome, I'd like to first start by welcoming, I know we've got a couple of regional councilors here. I've got Regional Counselor Bob Gale, where's Bob? Bob's up here. And we've got Regional Counselor You gotta read this stuff, read this stuff. Hey, ladies and gentlemen, welcome, I'd like to first start by welcoming, I know we've got a couple of regional councillors here. I've got Regional Councillor Bob Gale, where's Bob? Bob's up here. And we've got Regional Councillor Slayne de Ballpatty joining us today because they just can't get enough of us here. How would a big hand for our two regional councillors? Feel the love in the room, everybody? Okay, good. So, here's what I'd like to do, I'd like to read to you a little bit about the background of who we've got here. We've got two teams we're recognizing today, provincial champions, and we've got these neat Triumph Awards. We've got the Atom Awards, we've got the Novice Knights Awards, and then we've got some from the coaches, too. Because I know you've been eyeing these up, Mike, and I know you guys are very interested in some words. Now, both the Knights program, for those of you that don't know, for our friends at home, for both the people that are watching us online here, we want them to know what we're doing here. The Knights, that was a joke, there's more than a couple people. Joke, it's okay, good. Couple off, that's right. I'll keep my day job. The Knights Rep Hockey entered the 2016-17 season as new members of the Ontario Rep Hockey League, a league that reports to the National Independent Hockey League for the USA and Canada. The Knights Rep Hockey values include only 12 players per team for maximum ice time, a league code of conduct for players, coaches, and for the parents, non-parent professional coaches, players can play for any team, there are no boundaries, they value development over wins. I'd say right off the hop, what do you think? We've got a good program going here? I think that's pretty good. That's what we're talking about, we're developing the leaders of tomorrow, that's what we're developing, right? It's bigger than hockey, you guys, you're leaders and I'm glad that you have such a program. Now, we're going to start off with the Novice Knights. The Novice Knights ended their regular season in first place with a 26-4-and-2 record. They won three tournaments held in Sioux-St. Marie, Burlington, and London. At the provincial championships held in Oakville, April 7th through 9th, 2017, the Novice Knights finished in first place winning the provincial championship with a 5-0 record. And we're going to call up the players one by one, we're going to give them one of these plaques, I'm going to ask Mike to maybe call up each of the players and, okay, whoever, you decide, Harz, you're in charge. And we're going to give them a plaque, if your, if mom or dad wants to come take a picture, you can come right up to the front here, we'll do it right here, we'll shake their hands and they'll come in, then we'll do a group shot. Everybody good with that? Okay, you got that, everyone's good? Okay, good, everyone's good. All right, so you've got the list there? Okay, so, yeah, you'll call one at a time, I'll do one. You're going to do the Novice Knights first.
Okay, I'll start with Ethan Abrams.
Congratulations, buddy. This one's for you. Okay, if there's anybody that's got to wave if you're taking a picture, you're taking a picture? Don't be shy, just come right up. Okay, good, good job.
Okay, Gian Digni.
Okay, anybody here that's got to tell me if you're coming? Okay, yes, great.
Isaiah Hall.
Who do we got? You've got to wave to me, guys, I don't know who's coming.
Lucas Smith. Okay, Gary Enigret. Noah Gray. Luke Pydis.
Is that the guy who helped coach baseball?
Cade Snyder.
Want to take a bit of credit?
Jackson Cubney. Taylor Lyons. Jackson Roberts. Cassidy Krogan. Brady Nusel.
Do you want to maybe give a little synopsis of the team? Anything you want to share with everybody?
Yeah, actually, I was just, I wanted to thank the mayor, the Daddie, and the council members, the city of Niagara Falls, for having us here tonight to recognize our successful season. It's an honor being here, I'm sure these kids are going to remember this the rest of their life. I'd also like to thank the great parents, the entire staff for all their hard work. It shows that hard work pays off. Throughout the year, our main goal was to develop great players and good people. I'm so proud of all these kids. Coaching you was one of the best experiences I've had in my entire hockey career. So, I'd like to congratulate both Knights teams on their provincial championship.
You guys want to take your cameras, right? Use your group picture time. Got to pull in tight, everybody, pull in tight so you can all fit. Okay, so you, your coaches are going to stay though, right? Okay, you guys are all going to stay. Okay, guys, thanks, congratulations. A very big hand for the team. Okay, so up next are the Atom Knights. Now, the Atom Knights finished their league play in a tie for fourth place with a record of 28, 13, and 6. They finished in the semifinals in all three tournaments. At the provincial championships held April 7th through 9th of this year in Oakville, where the London team was the top-seeded team, the Atom Knights won a perfect 5-0 and beat out London in the finals 3-1 to win the provincial championships. How would a big hand for the Atom Knights?
Hey, we're going to start with McLean and Grant. Liam Duffy. Bryce Nolan.
I think I went to high school with him.
Eden Smith. Luke, prepare results. Eddie Friesen. Dylan Orr. Pete Sutherland.
Someone else want to take one for it? Put a name and then send it to them, okay?
This is not for sun.
Oh, we should get a try now.
Lydson Digni. Marshall Peterson. Vincent Cuavelo. Ryland Mufarian. And we'll save the best for last, Wesley Pydis. Miss Dawn Galarkey. Mr. Marco Ferlass. And our owner and president, Mike Congrat.
Hopefully wins more paparazzi. Congratulations. So, we're going to do the group shot now?
Uh, I am-
Todd Syven Head Coach. So, we'll do the group shot now, everybody? Pull in tight, guys, pull in tight. Say Mayor McCheese. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the city, I just want to say we're all very proud of all you young'uns that played and we also want to say we appreciate the sacrifice, the parents, the grandparents, the uncles, the aunts. It's a big job, the brother, brothers and sisters that tag along, go to the arenas. It's not easy, I know what it's like, I've got three of my own and it's busy. So, to all of you making the sacrifice for your kids, it's great for your coaches, selflessly sacrificing their time to develop these kids, because it's all about development, that's what, that's what this is all about, it's much bigger than just hockey. And also to Mike for creating this opportunity and this atmosphere for all these kids to flourish and these parents to get to know each other and to really grow some great young adults. So, how would a big hand for everyone?
Thank you, councillor, we know we took a long amount of time, but not too many times we've been to provincial championships, so thank you very much. We get to do this at the region expo, but you're not in any pictures.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to continue on, we're going to bounce around this agenda a little bit, I apologize. We're next going to ask, we've got our GO Hub Study Presentation. Denise Landry, planner from the region, with the support of city planning staff, will be presenting an update on the Niagara Falls GO Hub and Transit Station Study Project. So, welcome. Okay, both those mics, you might want to, yeah, sorry, both that. Okay, both those mics you might wanna, yeah, sorry, both that.
You switch it with this? Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you a brief presentation on the progress and next steps for the Niagara Falls Go Hub and Transit Station Study. With me here tonight, we have Ron Tripp as well as Matt Robinson from the region. The purpose of this study that was initiated in 2015 is to develop secondary plans for the lands within the study area, addressing elements such as transit-oriented development, urban design and infrastructure improvements, repair transit station design plans and undertake a market analysis to understand the development opportunities in and around the station. The study contains six phases. Phases one and two were completed during 2016. We undertook extensive background data collection and developed a vision with stakeholders and community members. We're currently in phases three, four and five of the study. As part of phase three, we're drafting secondary plans and demonstration plans and discussing them with our local municipal partners, including Niagara Falls, and we are continuing to refine these before we go to the public in June. As part of phase four, we're undertaking a transportation analysis. We are assessing existing and future transportation infrastructure as well as identifying infrastructure improvements in and around the station. As part of phase five, we've started discussions with Metrolinks for how we're going to undertake the concept plans for the station area. This slide shows the boundary of the secondary plan in red and the transit station area in orange. Transportation analysis work feeds into the development of the secondary plan and the transit station design. The transportation network will be tested based on the proposed future land uses within the station area. Transit in the right location can be a catalyst for cities for growth and redevelopment. Kitchener leveraged the future LRT and has been proactively planning for this growth for over 20 years, as an example. Niagara Falls has a similar opportunity with the Go Transit Station that can be used as a mechanism to attract and support uses such as a higher-order educational facility. Vision and objectives for Niagara Falls Station were developed through consultation and engagement in phases one and two. The first objective is to improve the public realm at gateway locations, public spaces, prominent streets and improve active transportation connectivity. The second is to provide opportunities for redevelopment and intensification by concentrating mixed-use development along Bridge Street, Park Street and portions of Queen Street. Third objective is to protect and strengthen adjacent neighborhoods, including Glenview to the north of the station. The next is to support medium-density tourist commercial uses along the riverfront, capitalizing on the views and vistas of the gorge. Celebrate and preserve the many iconic and historic buildings and cultural assets of the downtown in Niagara Falls. The team is beginning to work on the stationary design, taking into consideration the long-term vision for a mixed-use area supported by appropriate densities while recognizing the need for parking to accommodate ridership. We're meeting with our stakeholders in May to discuss the draft visions. We'll be going to the public with the visions and demonstration plans in June, on June 15th in the evening, and we'll be at the library on Victoria Avenue. As part of this work, we've undertaken a public engagement strategy. As part of this work, we're undergoing a social media campaign to really help bring out people to these sessions so we can have a meaningful discussion with the members of the public and businesses. Future discussions will occur with stakeholders and the public in the fall to discuss revisions to the demonstration plans and station design. Thank you for listening. The project team is here tonight and more than happy to address any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions of council? Nothing at all? Okay, so are we looking, Mr. Clerk, are we looking for a motion to receive the presentation? Moved by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Strange. Is there any discussion to that? All right, we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's approved unanimously. Thank you very much. It seems so quiet in here now without the big crowds. Okay, we're gonna bounce around a little bit here. Also deputations, we have Hart Niagara here. So we've got Vanessa Rasso, Hart Niagara will inform counsel of the upcoming event and request some fee waivers related to the event. Karen Stern. And we've got somebody else here too, it looks like.
We do. So, thank you, Mayor and council. So my job tonight is just to remind everybody and thank them for all you do in our community. Hart Niagara is 40 years old this year, so we've got lots of celebrations going on. One of the things is we've launched a cookbook, and so there's a copy here for everyone tonight. We did not get here before the crowds to put them on your desks, so hopefully somebody can distribute them at the end of the evening. And two of our staff are here to make the presentation. And they got a good night because everybody's pretty quiet now, they've been exhausted by all the kids. So this is Victoria Lafrada and Vanessa Rasso who are with Hart Niagara, our staff.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and council members. We're a little nervous because this is our first presentation, so bear with us. So we're here to talk about our event called Picnic on the Q. So Hart Niagara is hosting an event called Picnic on the Q. We're celebrating, we are celebrating living in the heart of the city and also celebrating Canada's 150th anniversary and our own 40th anniversary. So, community members, so the idea of the picnic is community members can pack their own picnic or they can order from Queen Street restaurants. So we've made this an opportunity also for local Queen Street restaurants to get free promotion as if they... Sorry, I'm so nervous right now.
It's okay, don't be, don't be.
Okay, so we're giving them the opportunity to get free promotion. So if they make sort of like a picnic basket, then people can pre-order from them and then pick it up advanced at the event. So it is gonna be on June 8th from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. And it's gonna be located on Queen Street and we're focusing around City Hall. So tables will cost $120, which will provide you with 60 chairs, a table, table covering, entertainment and play zones that we're setting up. So the idea of the play zones is to get kids and adults involved while performing and having a great time with a lot of traditional games that we have set up.
You said 120?
150, oh, sorry, for the table?
Yeah.
120.
120, and how many people at the table?
Six to eight, so it's your choice.
Six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six to eight, sorry.
Six?
To eight.
Oh, to eight.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. So this is a very exciting time for us, like I mentioned, it is our 40th anniversary. We are going to be connecting 150 tables together in honor of also celebrating Canada's 150th anniversary. So the idea is we're gonna be connecting the 150 tables and we're actually gonna position them in the form of a C all the way around City Hall. So we also will have everyone who is at the picnic, we will be giving them a red napkin and we're gonna get an aerial shot of everyone waving a flag patriotically while we take an overhead shot of our community eating together.
So the net proceeds from Picnic on the Q will be a fundraising opportunity for Hart Niagara and it's gonna act as a stepping stone for us to achieve the Guinness World Records for the longest picnic table in 2018, which is one of our goals for next year. If we achieve this record, downtown Queen Street and Niagara Falls as a whole will be recognized worldwide for this accomplishment. This is beneficial for local businesses as it will attract more people to the downtown area and promote all that Queen Street has to offer. And we also think that it will give people a sense of community pride. The overall goal of Picnic on the Q is to strengthen our community by bringing individuals of all ages together to a local space to meet new people, support local businesses, build community relationships, encourage healthy eating and promote physical activity, all while sharing a meal together. Hart Niagara is building a movement to get the community eating together because we believe that a community that eats together is stronger.
So tonight we are requesting that fees be waived related to the event. We're also asking for council resolution to support Picnic on the Q. We appreciate everything council does for our city and continuing to show our civic pride. So we are also asking councillor members to come together, each councillor member to come together with five tables to show their civic pride and help support our event. We would also like to ask if council can share our event on social media and engage staff to be a part of our event as well. And we do have a poster here tonight and we're hoping maybe as well if we could put it up in City Hall and also the McBain Center.
Okay, you've got more than one, I take it?
What's that, sorry?
You've got more than one?
Oh yeah, we have more than one.
Okay.
Oh yeah.
Now, the date, I'm sorry, the date for this year is?
June 8th.
Okay.
5:30 to 8.
And that day is?
It's a Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah.
And then you're going for the record next year?
Next year.
That's the 150 tables.
No, no, 150 tables is this year.
Oh, that's this year. And next year you're, and you got an idea yet?
It's roughly like 400 and something, it keeps changing.
Okay, oh, right, everyone breaks it and then it's a new record. It's a moving target.
Yes, exactly.
I'm sorry, do you still have more presentations?
No, if you guys have any more questions.
So do you have questions, yes, Counselor Thompson?
No, I don't have any questions, I just, 40 years, it's amazing. Who was the first chairman of the board?
Let me guess, Wayne Thompson?
Yeah, Stafford was very keen in what he did back then. Anyway, 40 years of life-saving efforts in our community. A lot of people don't really know all of the details of Hart Niagara, how it has grown, what different capacities they're involved in. In fact, I talked to Stafford, Dr. Dobbin, today about coming to council with a whole new suggestion on how they're gonna expand their effect on the region with respect to Hart Health. It's amazing what's been accomplished and I have to say without exception that Stafford, Dr. Stafford Dobbin was the initiator, the idea, and has been the driving force behind this since day one. So congratulations, all you've done and accomplished, all the people, thousands and thousands of people that you've helped with heart ailments, heart disease, it's, and it all started here in Niagara Falls. So congratulations, and I'd make the motion that we assist them any way we can with respect to the event and also the waiver of the fees involved.
Did you wanna commit to, okay, a table or something, or, I know they want us to get about 42 tables, I thought it was.
We thought we'd try.
Can you put a couple of tables in?
I have five friends.
Okay.
I think we can put a couple of tables.
Okay. So a motion that we waive the fees associated, help promote through our website, social media and whatnot through the city, and that we commit to a couple of tables, Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, your worship, I'd like to second that, but I also would like to suggest that we do the best we can to support it. My family supported it last year, it was an awesome event. The grandkids enjoyed themselves and as far as I could tell, everybody around us had a great time. So I would encourage the community to get behind Hart Niagara.
Terrific. Okay, so we've got a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Campbell. And is there any other discussion around the motion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote, all those in favor, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much, ladies, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cook a recipe from the book.
Okay, next item up, Stanford Collegiate. Anne Gilmore, the principal, and Helga Campbell, board trustee, from Stanford Collegiate will inform counsel of their upcoming 160th anniversary event. I just hope Counselor Thompson wasn't the chair of that first anniversary, that first event as well. You're just getting it now, you guys, holy smokes. It's not even that late.
Before Karen goes, I want to give a shout out to Karen because Hart Niagara would not be functioning today if it wasn't for the work that Karen does. What she does blows me away, I don't know how she has the energy or time to do everything, but she keeps Hart Niagara going. Okay, I'm pleased to talk about Stanford, your worship and councillors, thank you for the opportunity. I'm pleased to talk about Stanford as I feel it is one of the most comprehensive schools within Niagara, providing students with the educational opportunities that best match their abilities and skills.
I would also recognize the connections with Stanford in this room. Ken Todd is a graduate of Stanford, as is Counselor Cario. And Counselor Campbell was an administrator at...
But he's a reseem.
Oh, I didn't know. Are you a graduate of Stanford? Oh, there you go. Yeah, that counts, that counts. Counselor Strange is a graduate, sorry, nobody told me. Counselor Campbell was an administrator at Stanford and I actually did some supply teaching at Stanford in the late 70s. So there's a lot of Stanford, orange and black in this room. I'd like to just highlight some of the things that make Stanford pretty special, starting with academic achievements. Stanford has had $20,000 worth of Branson School scholarships given to its students. Two Stanford students have been selected to be student trustees with the District School Board of Niagara. One last year, served last year, and one will be incoming this year from Stanford. So that's quite an accomplishment to, two of them. There's two student trustees on the board each year, selected from all the schools within the board. Stanford students have been studying in U.S. Ivy League schools and one has a full scholarship to Harvard. There is a graduate with a co-op placement at the Atomic Energy Canada Nuclear Reactor Plant. Stanford's photography and videography courses have had 100% placement at the post-secondary level for 22 years. And two students out of 2,000 for 25 spots, two students for 25 spots out of 2,000 have been accepted into Brock's brand-new gaming BA. And finally, let's not forget that James Cameron and Barbara from are graduates of Stanford. Stanford has, as I said, they serve students with a variety of different needs. They have special programs like the five specialist high-skill majors. The five, five of those high-skills majors are in construction, health and wellness, arts and culture, and it's the only school in Niagara Falls to have the arts and culture high-skills major. Horticulture, which is responsible for building the, if any of you have noticed, the playground at Cherrywood School, Cherrywood Acres Public School, it's really a lovely spot for kids and they're presently building the same kind of playground at Riverview Public School in Chippewa. And finally, hospitality is one of the high-skills majors, which has led to a catering business called The Orange Plate. The advantage to these programs, it does give students an advantage when applying to post-secondary schools if they have some background in these areas. There is also the specialized school-to-work program and these programs focus on preparing students to enter the workforce by focusing on co-op and hands-on skills. And finally, Stanford has more technical programs to offer students than any other high school and has the largest computer studies program in the DSPN. And Stanford has been recognized in many different areas. The Technology Department has won Best Float in Santa Claus Parades in three years in a row, in technology skills competitions, gold, silver and bronze in cosmetology, silver and bronze in computer animation and gold in auto industry. Drama productions have been a special focus at Stanford. Invisible Wounds, which dealt with mental health, especially PTSD suffered by soldiers, won the Sears Drama Festival last year. And We Will Rock You, it will be playing this year, or this week, starting tomorrow. Actually, we saw the dress rehearsal yesterday with our grandkids. We Will Rock You is a collaboration between... We Will Rock You is a collaboration between Stanford students and West Lane students, and it will be on at the Seneca Queen tomorrow, Thursday and Friday night, and Saturday at seven o'clock, Saturday at noon, noon or eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. And Stanford has a platinum, or has been certified as a platinum eco-school by the province, and is only one of a handful of schools recognized in that regard. The DSPN has recognized the importance of Stanford in our community, and continues to invest in Stanford to best meet the needs of our students. For example, if you've seen or been to Stanford lately, you've seen the new entrance, the new atria, an entrance area in the back off the parking lot, a quarter-million-dollar fitness center at Stanford, and a new resource room. I've tried to capture some of the highlights, although I haven't mentioned the many extracurricular activities available to students, from chess competitions to a wide variety of sports, which are equally important in a young person's education. At this point, I'd like to introduce Stanford's principal, Anne Gilmore, with whom I have worked on the District School Board of Niagara's literacy plan, and I know from that experience she has the skills and heart to continue Stanford's proud tradition of meeting all the learning needs of the students in our community. Anne?
Thank you. And thank you for having us here to, to talk about the event. I can tell you from the heart that working at Stanford has made me not only a better principal, but a better person. I do have a very short ninety-second video to, to introduce the event, and then I'll very briefly talk about what's going to happen on the day, June tenth. So if we could cue the video? Thank you. It's official, I can't believe we're actually older than Canada. Some parts of the building, it is like a maze, the folks at the plant at DSPN, they shudder whenever they have to do some work on it. They are continuing some renovations and improvements even this summer, but they're holding off until I have our event, which is June tenth. We have an afternoon tea that's open for folks in the afternoon to stop by in the cafeteria, and that's free. Our evening event starts at seven and goes till about eleven-thirty. We're, we're doing it for two reasons. We're doing it to celebrate, be part of the celebration of the hundred-and-fiftieth, but to bring us all together, but we're also running a silent auction and raffle to raise money, because we do put a lot of money back to the kids. Every day, we're feeding them breakfast, we feed them lunch, we give them clothes, I taxi them if they, if parents need help getting places. So the money that's raised with the silent auction and the raffle will go towards those programs. So far, I think we've got about three thousand dollars' worth of prizes to, to raffle off and auction that night. So I am going to leave you with some tickets, Jim. I'm going to give you four complimentary to do with as you wish. I'm also giving you four tickets to We Will Rock You that you can give away as well. And thank you so much for letting us advertise this event. It's going to be a great day, thank you very much.
All right, great, thank you. Are there any questions of council for Anne or Helga? Okay, looks like we're good to go. Thank you very much, thank you. Next item, we're going to go to our planning matter. This is twenty-six, T eleven, twenty sixteen, this is Gritola Court. I now, thank you, I now ask our clerk to please introduce the next item on the agenda.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a draft plan of subdivision and to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to permit seven lots for single detached dwellings and one block for road widening at three-one-one-eight Montrose Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, April seventh, two thousand seventeen, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the draft plan of subdivision and the zoning bylaw amendment, to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I now ask Mr. Hirlovich, our director of planning, to explain the purpose and the reason for this proposed draft plan and bylaw amendment.
Yes, thank you, your worship. The property in question is on the east side of Montrose Road, it's north of Thoracel Stone Road, and it's basically at the urban boundary, immediately to the north is the Ontario Hydro Corridor, and that forms the limit of the urban boundary. It's about opposite Matthews Drive in the Mount Carmel subdivision. It's one-point-seven acres in size, it's highlighted on the screen. The proposal before you tonight is to extend a new street with a cul-de-sac into that property. There would be seven lots total. One of those lots would be for the existing house, which will remain on the site, and there will be six new houses constructed on that property. The, that's the subdivision design. The zoning is to change the zoning from development holding to a new, excuse me, R-one-E zone, and there are a couple of special provisions. One is to limit the height of the building to ten meters max, that's not anything new, that's what the limit is in an R-one-E zone, but they do want to limit it to two stories, just so that there would be no buildings taller than two stories constructed. As well, there would be a fourteen-meter rear yard setback for the lots that back onto the Queen Elizabeth Way. This is a Ministry of Transportation requirement, and we would be building that into the zoning amendment. The last thing that we're looking at, and this is part of, part of the subdivision design, are two one-foot reserves, point-three-meter reserves along the west boundary line of the subdivision with Montrose Road. This would preclude a driveway from extending on to Montrose Road, as well, that then defines that lot, otherwise it would have front, you know, Montrose, the new street, and the bulb, and there would be no place for anyone to put a shed on that property. So with having the one-foot reserve, that lot would have a rear yard on the left of the proposed house, and they could there and put a shed, pool, and other accessory structures. The last thing is a one-foot reserve, so that the, there could be no access between the bulb of this cul-de-sac and the private road of the condominium development beneath that. Oops, what was playing with my thing? So the owner seeks to, as I said, approval for a plan of subdivision, seven lots total, one-point-seven acres, and proposes to change the zoning from development holding to an R-one's E with special provisions for height and rear yard depth. We did have a neighborhood meeting on this property in March of this year, there were seventeen neighbors who came out. They did question the potential parking and whether there'd be any problems, whether or not the lots would be sold as vacant lots, or whether the houses would be constructed before selling, whether trees would be preserved or removed, about privacy for the abiding neighbors, and this, whether the sizes of the houses would have any impact on the value of the neighboring properties. The applicant responded through her agent that they do not anticipate any parking issues that say private cul-de-sac with a double-wide driveway, two cars and a garage, two in the driveway, any trees that would be impacted would only be those that are necessary to be removed for the development. The size of the dwellings is somewhere between twenty-four hundred and three thousand square feet, so they are of significant size, these are large lots, and that the zoning does comply with all of the R-one-E requirements. The official plan designates these lands residential. Montrose Road is a, an arterial road where we expect to see higher densities and where it would carry higher traffic volumes. The official plan requires a density of between ten to twenty units per hectare, however, this development is slightly under the minimum, but we do believe that it is compatible with the densities and the housing and building mass and setbacks in the surrounding area because of the configuration of the lot and that additional setback from the QEW, we really can't achieve the maximum densities. The zoning, as I outlined, is from DH to an R-one-E, they are looking for those two special provisions that I mentioned, and again, those, the special provision for the rear yard is to meet an MTO requirement. The height of the building, ten meters or two stories, would be, it says to permit a three-story, that should say to prevent a three-story building from occurring, so to limit it to two stories of the next line. Lot seven requires that one-foot reserve that I also mentioned, the subdivision, seven lots. Anyway, the, recommending that there, the new street is sixty-five meters long and complies with fire department requirements, they're recommending cash in lieu of parkland dedication, and then there are a number of conditions in the appendix to the report, these are the standard conditions of subdivision approval. So we're recommending that the applications be approved, that they are, do comply with the city's official plan, it will help meet the forty percent intensification target of the city, they maintain the character of the neighborhood, the existing and planned infrastructure can support the development, and will provide housing choices for the short-term housing supply in the city, and that the city and region and agencies' concerns are addressed to the conditions of this report. Therefore, we're recommending the Gritola Court Plan of Subdivision, we're recommending that the mayor or his designate be authorized to sign within twenty days of this hearing if there are no appeals, that the draft plan approval be for three years, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the subdivision agreement. Those are the highlights of this report.
Thank you, Mr. Hirlovich. Any questions of council for Mr. Hirlovich? Okay, seeing none, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referrals that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section thirty-four nineteen of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this proposed draft plan and bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here other than the applicant who wishes to address council? Okay, seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. Could you please state your name and your address, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Peter Colosimo, it's spelled C-O-L-O-S-I-M-O. I'm the agent and planning consultant for the applicant, Nancy Gritola.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for giving me this opportunity to speak on this matter. Mr. Hirlovich has given a good overview of the proposed development. We certainly believe this to be the most compatible residential choice and option for these lands, and took into consideration impacts on the area and the existing residents and surrounding uses in coming up with this plan. So we certainly support the staff recommendation, appreciate their efforts. There's a couple of minor modifications we'd like to, a couple of conditions there in the recommendation. Those relate to condition four C, which is regarding construction of sidewalks on Montrose Road, that's on page ten of the, the planning report. Our development with the cul-de-sac being a public road doesn't require a sidewalk. Staff has asked for a sidewalk to be constructed on Montrose Road, being on arterial road, which probably makes sense, but in discussions with staff, although it's not in the recommendation, discussions with staff, they had suggested that that would have to be paid for by the developer. It's our opinion that this is outside of the subdivision, should be covered through development charges. The city's development charges, in fact, which the developer is responsible for, for the six new homes, includes about two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars for each lot for new sidewalks in the area. So you'd kind of be double-dipping if that sidewalk was made payable by the developer. So what we're requesting is that be paid for by the city. I understand it may not be in development charges as a project right now, but in discussions with the Director of Municipal Works, that may be something that could be included in the next bylaw and constructed at that time. So what we're requesting is that the wording in that condition four C include wording that that sidewalk, if necessary, be paid for by the city. So that's one minor modification. The second minor modification is related to condition twenty-seven, which is for an archaeological assessment. That was requested by Niagara Regional Staff. Our concern there is that there wasn't a provision for a archaeological assessment for the townhouse development to the south. That development is, is a much larger site, and it wasn't made a condition when that development was approved by council a few years ago. It's right adjacent to Shriners Creek, which typically would be the highest potential for archaeological resources if there were any in the area. This site being about five hundred feet removed from the creek, small size of the property, about one-point-seven acres, retaining an existing dwelling with a lot of disturbances on the property, so given the scale and disturbances already, we don't believe that doing an assessment would, would be beneficial to anyone. But the other condition the region has asked for, condition twenty-eight, is related to, if anything's found during construction, and that certainly is important, if there are any cultural heritage resources, they've been protected, and that's the appropriate time would be at construction to take care of those matters and deal with the ministry directly. So what we're requesting there is that the condition twenty-seven be deleted, the following condition twenty-eight be maintained, which is a clause in the subdivision agreement related to construction and the protection of those resources, if any. So that being said, in closing, I just want to appreciate staff's effort, the time to speak to council. Certainly believe this represents good planning and is appropriate for the area, and look for your support, subject to those minor changes that we've requested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hirlovich, so we've got comments on item four C, the sidewalks, and twenty-seven, the archaeological, so did you want to weigh in on that for council? And then I've got councillor Thompson.
I don't know whether the, sorry. I don't know whether the Municipal Works Director would want to weigh in. So is it possible to bring the first PowerPoint? Yes, thank you. So the lands in question are outlined in red, he references, that is speaker, Mr. Colosimo references, the request for a sidewalk, so it would be that red line on the left side of the box. What I noticed, well, the slide was on the screen earlier, is there is no sidewalk from the entrance to the townhouses north to the red box, so we'd be asking for a sidewalk from nowhere to nowhere, and perhaps the request does make sense that that sidewalk be considered as part of a future development charge project, and the, so subject to the Director of Municipal Works satisfaction, I don't see why that request couldn't be accommodated. With respect to the, the second point, the removal of condition twenty-seven, that's the region's request, you know, that would be up to them, you know, I don't have a real issue with that, as pointed out, there is a requirement, should they do any work on the site, encounter any remains, they would have to advise the region and the ministry in any event, so, and the likelihood of whether there would be something is removed since the property is not near a stream, there has been disturbance through farming and then the Queen Elizabeth over the years, so I don't have a problem with the request.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Thompson?
Yes, I'm very familiar with-
Yes, I'm very familiar with the area out here and drive by there on numerous occasions, and soon as I saw the two houses goes up, that went up for sale at the same time, I thought, oh, there's Saco's going to continue on their development and expand to the north. So this is a surprise, but I've seen the work they're doing on the one house there, completely refurbishing it, which they're doing a good job. So I think this is really a downscaling from the Saco development, which is adjacent to this. So seven individual residential houses, I think, is extremely reasonable. I like the idea of no sidewalk. Gives you the opportunity to have more access for cars in and out, and I don't have any problem, there's no sidewalk there, so why would you put a sidewalk there? Anyway, I think, you haven't closed the meeting, but at the appropriate time, I agree with the submission. I think it's an appropriate development for there. It's in very nicely, and at the appropriate time, I would move the motion, subject to the conditions, changes that have been asked.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Colosimo? Okay, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of subdivision and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Counselor Thompson moves the recommendation, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any discussion of the motions? Counselor Grater? Yes?
Thank you, worship. I just want to, just want to check, because I did go to the public meeting, and I knew there were some residents there, and I see a couple of them come out. I just want to be sure, because I've never been to these meetings before. Did they know that if they wanted to speak, they could? So can you just double-check?
I've already done that.
But they may not have known.
Well, we've already closed the meeting at this point.
So the answer is no then? Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, no, the answer's not no, Counselor. I asked twice, and I've closed the meeting, so now they can't talk at this point, no.
Okay, I understand. I was just saying that they may be, well, is there any residents?
Counselor.
They left and you're right? That's fine, you worship, thank you.
Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Okay, so now we're jumping around a little bit on tonight's agenda. I apologize. We're going to go back to the beginning, community engagement, and we have Dale Morton, our manager of strategic and corporate initiatives, and Teresa Simmons, our communications officer, who are going to make a presentation to counsel tonight.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
We're happy to be here tonight to present our new online engagement site, Let's Talk Niagara Falls. Our new community engagement initiatives fall under the strategic priority of customer service excellence, and the objectives that it fulfills are continuing to implement the city's corporate communications plan, simplifying and increasing public access to city information programs and services, and ensuring meaningful public involvement that respects the contribution of our residents. We view this just as another opportunity for the council to strengthen the relationship with the people of Niagara Falls and for staff to ensure that council gets the information that they need to identify feedback on community needs and perspectives. We've developed a community engagement framework, which is a consistent approach for our staff to engage the community, and it addresses how, when, and the steps that are necessary should, that should be considered during engagement, and we've included a number of resources, tools, and templates for staff's use. It also demonstrates the city's ongoing commitment to engaging the community in a more meaningful and effective way. The framework's viewed as a living document, and that will evolve and change over time, and we encourage input from staff and the community to help us further define it. A big part of our renewed approach to engagement is improving our online presence. No one knows better than the people who live here and work here what is needed for our community, but it's become increasingly difficult for people to attend public meetings. Like many other aspects of life, people are really busy, and they may prefer to communicate online in a time and in a location that's most convenient to them. Let's Talk Niagara Falls does not replace face-to-face engagement. It enhances our ability to connect in a different way. The primary goals of our online engagement are to bring new voices to the table and to increase transparency and accessibility to public consultation. We hope to transition the conversation from social media comments to positive, meaningful, respectful exchanges with the city through Let's Talk. Okay, so what is Let's Talk Niagara Falls? Well, we'd like to introduce the engagement site to you and highlight its usability, features, and benefits. Let's Talk Niagara Falls is an innovative and interactive way that the community members can offer feedback on city initiatives that are important to them and help inform council's decision-making. We want to empower residents to take an active role in shaping their community and future. The site is managed by city communication staff, Dale and myself. However, it's hosted and moderated by a company called Bang the Table and their engagement HQ software. Bang the Table is a world leader in municipal engagement, and they offer a range of tools, widgets, and analytical resources, which we'll explain in more detail shortly. Now, we've had a two-minute video created that will introduce the community Let's Talk Niagara Falls that we'd like to share with you now.
Niagara Falls, Let's Talk. Have you ever looked at the city and thought to yourself, "I can make you better? I got ideas?" Well, the city is committed to working more closely with the community. That'd be you, to improve engagement and better inform council's decision-making. That's a boring way of saying that we want to empower you to take action in shaping your community and your future through your input on really important matters.
Important meeting today. Should I go with a blue or red tie?
Blue radiates peace.
Peace and tranquility, like waves on a shore. Done?
Gone are the days where you can keep those ingenious opinions and ideas to yourself or merely vent on various social media outlets. This is your chance to actually impact the activities, issues, and programs that are important to you, and it's important to us that all members of the community are able to get involved. That's why we created Let's Talk Niagara Falls, our new online engagement site that allows for you to connect to the city at any time on matters where community input would help shape decisions that are better for, you guessed it, the community. From potholes to pools, tourism to local issues, Let's Talk is your way to make a difference by being a part of the conversation. Here you can find and share information, participate in surveys, which will allow for high-impact feedback on important matters, or dive deep into discussion forums and strategize how we can improve the area. Let's Talk is the hub where we'll collect ideas and process them into plans to enrich Niagara Falls the way you want. Communication, information, implementation, it is a beautiful thing, but we need your voice. This is your chance to speak up, and Let's Talk allows for your city to listen to you 24/7. We genuinely want to work with you and discuss how we can make our great city even greater. To make a difference, go to letstalk.nigerfals.ca. Get registered, and Let's Talk Niagara Falls.
Okay, so as the video pointed out, signing up is quick and easy. All residents need to do is click on the sign-up on the page, create a username and password, fill in a few details, and that's it. They're ready to engage. We should mention that all public comments submitted to Let's Talk Niagara Falls are moderated 24/7 by Bang the Table. This is ensure that all comments, that the comments are relevant to the topic, that they don't target individuals, and that they're appropriate, and users are aware of this as they need to agree to the terms of use and the privacy policy when signing up. Okay, so Let's Talk is not specific to any one department in the city. Any city project initiative with an engagement component can be featured on the site. These are just a few of the current examples that are live on the site right now. Now, depending on the project and engagement being sought, project pages feature interactive engagement tools and widgets. This includes everything from forum topics, surveys, news feeds, quick polls, guestbooks, stories, Q&amp;As, maps, and brainstormers. In addition to the tools, there's widgets that can be added for supporting information, such as FAQs, key timeline, or key dates, timelines, photos, related resources. Now, these are just a few of the live engagement tools that are on. So we have a survey open for a new south end off-leash dog park, a quick poll for Canada Day. Submit ideas or stories for how we can improve our city, and the news feed feature is on for the Harvard Avenue sanitary sewer replacement project page, just to keep affected residents in the loop of what's happening there.
Another great feature of the engagement HQ software is the budget allocator tool. As you can see in the example, we have the opportunity to use Let's Talk and the budget allocator tool to engage the community on the 2018 budget, if council so chooses. The tool provides the community with the opportunity to simulate adjusting municipal tax dollars to support various programs and services, and provides council with feedback regarding their preferences. In addition to the specific project pages that Teresa discussed, we have added more ways to increase feedback. If there's a particular service or city employee that a member of the public would like to thank, they can do so at the staff shout-outs. Niagara Falls residents have plenty of ideas on how to make our city a better place, and we want to hear them, so we encourage people to go to the My Idea Is section, and they can list their ideas about improving the city, and more importantly, how they'd like to do that. And how can we help? Provides an opportunity for people to submit general questions or request assistance. So we launched Let's Talk Niagara Falls at the state of the city on March 1st, and the state of the city really looked at the heart of the community, and as a result of Let's Talk Niagara Falls currently hosts a variety of projects that will require community The soft launch was extended through our regular communications channels and our newspaper advertisements, social media, e-news, our website, and in two months, from March 1st to May 1st, 1,588 individuals have become aware of the Let's Talk site. There's really three levels of engagement through Let's Talk. Participants who are aware, participants who are informed, and participants who are engaged, which we shall explain in a little more detail.
So the first level of engagement that we measure are those who are aware. So an aware visitor has visited Let's Talk, the main page, or a project page. This includes registered and non-registered visitors. Those without an account can still access the site and learn about just the site or featured projects on it. The next level that we measured are those who are informed. These visitors take the next step from aware and either click on something on the site to show their interest, and that could be anything, as photos, or key timelines, key dates, or an FAQ. And the third level that we measure are those who are engaged. So this shows visitors who engage with the page and use an engagement widget. This includes registered visitors with an account, and an engaged visitor is always, is also informed and aware. So while the site is managed by Dale and myself as the communication staff, we're all listening, and we all have a role in Let's Talk Niagara Falls. Project managers can directly connect with the community and with the project pages. Over the next few months, we're planning to educate staff about the features and benefit of Let's Talk and how they can incorporate that into their engagement initiatives.
So starting this week, and with this presentation, we'll be rolling out a hard launch for Let's Talk Niagara Falls with the goal of educating the community and encouraging residents to sign up for an account. Some of the things that we'll be doing are a series of newspaper advertisements, displays on our community infocasters, social media ads and postings, the city e-newsletter and website, and a direct mailer through our water bill inserts. And Let's Talk Niagara Falls will be hosting a Live with Kelly and Ryan promotion with 250 pairs of tickets to win, and for each of the two shows on June 5th at the Oaks Garden Theater. Participants will be required to have a Let's Talk account to enter to win, and with this additional exposure, we hope to increase awareness of our Let's Talk site. So we'd like to thank you for taking this time to let us introduce you to Let's Talk Niagara Falls, and we'd like to end with a short video that we'll be using in our upcoming marketing to encourage residents to sign up.
Let's Talk Niagara Falls. If you haven't registered yet for Let's Talk, you're missing out, or perhaps I should say the city is missing out on your invaluable and life-changing feedback. Feedback that can make a difference. Feedback that, if you don't share, the city's going to have no other option than to leave the decision-making for this handsome devil here. And how's this guy supposed to know what's going on in your head?
I think I got a pretty decent idea what they're thinking.
Oh, yeah? Pick a number between 1 and 100.
14.
He's not a mind reader, so it's imperative that you get involved. Join the conversation at letstalk.nigerfals.ca, and if you're not ready to talk, no problem. Visit the project page to learn more.
So what was the number?
13.
I was close.
That's great, thank you very much. Any questions from counsel of Dale or Teresa?
Thank you.
Nice job. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, that's great. It's our big tool, everybody, so anyone that's asking you, because I've been getting so many emails and texts and Facebook messages, anyone that wants to get tickets to go see Kelly and Ryan, need to register on the Let's Talk site, and they'll be part of the lottery to get a chance to get tickets. So we need to get that message to everybody. If they want tickets, don't call City Hall, register on the website, and you have a chance to win tickets. There's hundreds of tickets I think available on that site.
That's right.
So we're all good? Motion received, the report, or the presentation? All right, all those in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
It was moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Rocker. I forgot that part, I said. I know, but I was looking this way, I couldn't see. Okay. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but I invited somebody here this evening who has had a persistent problem, which can, I think, can be dealt with very quickly, Dylan Shannon. Lives in LeMond Street in Chippewa and has been contacting me over the last several years, and just recently, you've seen where he has a small driveway and a cul-de-sac or lot, and somebody comes and parks there regularly at Wright Road. In fact, he has pictures of it, you had them on the weekend, I think, where they were parked for six hours. Half of his driveway was cut off. Anyway, he's here tonight. Did you want to say a word, or how long this has been going on?
Do you want to just make a motion, Counselor Thompson?
Make a motion.
Just make a motion, and we'll fix it. We'll make it easier.
Yeah, well, it's been going on for how long?
Parking signs. No parking signs. Make a motion.
Yeah, anyway, I know him very well. I used to work with his mother, Lydia Shannon, who was, worked for Joe Green, our federal Member of Parliament and Minister of Energy, Mines, and Resources for a long time. Great lady and great contribution to this community. Anyway, I'll make a motion. We recognize the problem, and we take whatever steps are necessary to rectify it, so.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. So any other discussion to that? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved? We're going to deal with it, though. Thank you very much. Okay, now, Kent Todd, our CAO, is going to make a very brief presentation updating counsel on strategic priorities.
Brief.
That was great, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We have the update of our strategic plan document. We've circulated it. I'll just go over some highlights for you tonight, but we're almost three years through a four-year mandate, and next year, we'll be bringing forward the final update from our strategic priorities for the year. So if we just proceed along, just some of the snapshots for this year. We had a very good year, Bill, if you want to just keep going on it? Yeah, just a very good year in some of our business. We had, across the street with Serge Falasetti's department, 94 clients that they serve started new businesses. We had $279 million in building permit value, which was hard for our staff sometimes to keep up. We had a number of applications through our Gateway Initiative that this council approved last year. We are in the process of the construction of our 5,000-seat theater, and for those of council know, that that's going to be completed by June of 19. They are going to be making announcements in the very, very near future on that award. As council knows, Go Train planning is underway. We've continued to have a work- They are going to be making announcements in the very, very near future on that award. As Council knows, GO train planning is underway. We've continued to have a working team that's working on that. You heard the Hub Study presentation tonight. So we're well on the way to delivering the GO train to the Niagara region. Bill, you can just keep flicking through here if you'd like. When we get over to the infrastructure piece, it's interesting to note that through our capital infrastructure, and you know, Council should be very proud of the investments we've made over the last few years. But for example, you know, we've replaced in the past year almost seven kilometers of sidewalk. Mr. Holman and his team have had about 12 kilometers of resurfaced roads. We've constructed almost seven kilometers total reconstruction of roads. So we are now up to slightly over 30 kilometers of maintained network trails within our community. So these are very huge accomplishments that we think Council should be very, very proud of. We've completed, and our Wego facility is completely operational. Number of major infrastructure projects Council has initiated. The low lift pumping station, Chippewa, and the containment tank, Thold Road Extension, Torrey Avenue Phase 1 and the Stanley Avenue project. Last year, we completed a complete retrofit of all of our LED lights to our complete community with our streetlights, over 8,000 lights. Again, thanks to Mr. Holman and his team. And we've initiated many sewer separation projects. On the financial scene, very good news. One of Council's initiatives, over the past year, we've lowered the debt by 5.6%. That's something that's, Council's been pushing us to do, so we've been delivering on that. We've had an increase in our net book value on our capital assets, up over $6 million last year alone. And our debt servicing cost has reduced to 6.14% in 2014 to 5.3% in 15. And just to put that in perspective, our debt capacity that the province allows is around 20%. I would say on average, most municipalities probably hover in that 10% range. And our Council's net, our debt servicing cost is about 5.3%. So we're doing very well on the debt servicing front. If we skip over to our transportation, Council has made investments in our transportation. Mr. Dren and his team, with some of the changes in our routes that we've made on our conventional routes over the last few years, we've actually seen about a 10% increase in ridership over the past 12 months. So those new route improvements are proving to be successful. And on the safety standpoint, we've gone out across the city and done an outreach program where all of our elementary students now receive training on safe road crossing with our Crossing Guard program. Over the last year, we've increased about 16 kilometers of on-road bike lanes. We've now creeped up where we've got a bronze medal award from the province on being a bike-friendly community. And pleased to announce with the investment that Council has made, we now have a fully barrier-free transit system with all of our fleet. So we've just recently gotten rid of our last high-floor buses, and now all of them are low-floor, and we are completely barrier-free, which is something Council can be very proud of. On the customer service front, I'd like to thank Dale and Teresa for being here tonight. Some really good initiatives that we're seeing in terms of our social media and getting the word out to the residents and listening to our members of the public. Just a number of things that we've done. We send out now a weekly email of all the updates of things that are happening in the city. We've got over, almost 3,000 subscribers to that. We've got a whole, about 20,000 Facebook followers, about 23,000 Twitter followers. So we are getting out on social media. If I skip over to organizational... This is one that we may have already flipped by, Dale, I'm not sure, but... Yeah, our average age of our staff is 49. And one of the things I'm very proud of that we've been doing is we've been reaching out to some of our younger employees. And we have a group of about 20 young employees that we've identified onto a leadership team. And there's some young professionals through all areas of our organization that we're identifying as future leaders of this corporation. They're wonderful individuals, you've met many of them. And because of that age, we need to start looking at who our future is. And that's what we've been trying to do with our leadership program. One of the things I'm very proud of, one of the things that we're going to continue on as we move forward as an organization. Dale, if we just go ahead now to the healthy and safe community. Interesting things here, we're over two hectares of open space per thousand people. That is above the provincial average. Our Coronation Center, we were up last week. Counselor Campbell, myself, and Kathy Moldenhauer and her staff, they do a great job at the Coronation Center. Programming there is great, it's just a wonderful facility. We have, we have, over 1,600 teams came to our city to participate in tournaments. That's something that we continue to focus on. Rob McDonald's doing a great job in terms of attracting teams, both at the Gale Center and through things like our slow pitch tournaments. So that's a wonderful thing that we have for the community. When I look at some of the fire responses, you can see what the responses were. You can look at the wake-up campaign they're out there doing now. May is Fire Prevention Month, and they're out actively visiting homes and doing smoke and carbon monoxide investigations. Mr. Mayor, the other big news coming out of Healthy and Safe Community is the fact that the announcement last week, or two weeks ago, in the provincial budget, where the province has identified our Niagara South Hospital in the budget. There were, I believe, five hospitals from across the province. We were listed as the number one. New bill, money's been committed in the budget. I think about $9 million was committed. So we're well on the way to delivering a hospital for South Niagara located in the city of Niagara Falls. Some of the vibrant community we've, on the trees. As you know, we've had to remove so many ash trees because of the ash bore, but we've had over 600 native trees planted. We had the seedling sale at the Gale Center, I think it was just last weekend. And we are trying to replenish those trees as part of our priority. 1,300, over 1,300 building permits. I believe we had close to 100, I'm sorry, close to 1,000 residential permits issued, which was the highest, almost double our five-year average last year. So the housing market in Niagara is really hot right now. We had over 12,000 visitors to our museum. We had over 1,200 people just visiting on one day on Family Day. So there's a lot of really good things happening at our museum with the staff that's there. One of the things we're very proud of in this whole area with Clark Burnett and his team, and again, Counselor Campbell, with our cultural plan. And Council adopted the first-ever cultural plan for this community, and we're carrying out that implementation of that plan. And this year, we'll complete and open the completed Section 6 of the Millennium Trail. So some of the key things that we're just going to follow up for as we go forward in '17. Council may not be aware, but over the last two years, you've committed close to $70 million in capital projects for this community. You just allocated another $4 million tonight. So we are really doing a good job on investing our OLG money into community projects that we desperately need to improve on. We have a number of initiatives on the casino front. As I said, the theater is going to be announced very, very shortly, the Successful Bitter. We continue to advocate on behalf of modernization. And at the next meeting, we'll have an update and a report on the Niagara Regional Police for you in the June meeting. The GO train, as I've indicated, is here and coming for 2023. We are trying to get that timeframe pushed up for 2021 with the recent announcement that Niagara will have the Canada Summer Games in 2021. Intermunicipal transit is a priority that we continue on. We have a couple of teams that are working to develop that. We'll be back to you hopefully within the next meeting or two with an MOU dealing with the consolidated model that was presented at this council a couple of weeks ago. There are, we continue to do our work on the Innovation Hub. We are continuing to try to have discussions with partners in getting out and getting provincial and federal money to advance that project. We'll be back in June with a report on moving forward with the Niagara District Airport. There's a couple of initiatives we have to complete, but we're mindful of Council's decision to want to divest itself of the airport asset by the end of this year. So, Mr. Mayor, that's just a few of the updates on the work that our staff has been doing. It's been a very busy year for all of us, but I think you could see there's a number of accomplishments and priorities at this council that we have been able to deliver for Council and the community. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for, yes, Counsel Crater.
Thank you, worship. Just one question, it just reminded me when you were talking about the Entertainment Center. Had a couple people ask me, did we ever hear anything from the OLG? Was unanimous decision that we're not supporting the Entertainment Center going on top of the casino? Did they challenge that, or is there any feedback that they're going to take us to the OMP or anything?
No, that message was communicated to them. They are going through their process, and they are going to have a public announcement very soon. But they gave us no indication that they were going to fight Council's decision on it.
That's good news, okay, thank you.
So we're moving forward, and we hope that within the next few weeks, hopefully at the next council meeting perhaps. But we do know that they're moving forward with some of the proponents that have been on the site.
Thanks very much, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to receive the report, the CIO report? Moved by Counsel Peter Angel, seconded by Counsel Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Now we're on to consent agenda items. What's the will of Council? Counselor Carrio?
Could I pull TS 2017-14 or just ask a question on it?
Okay, yeah, is there anything else anyone wants pulled? Counsel Crater? Same one? Okay, you guys got the same one, okay. Counsel Crater, you want everyone pulled?
Yes, PBD, PBD 2017-13. The only reason I'm asking for it to be pulled, regards to Heartland Forest, and extremely, extremely pleased that Mr. Bowman is here. And I'd just like him to say a couple of words on it. It's a very positive thing, but I think it's just an opportunity for him to share some really good news to the community of what's happening on at Heartland Forest.
Do we have anything else that anyone wants lifted? Okay, so why don't we start off with... We're not there yet, we still have to finish the consent agenda. We're really jumping in, that's good. Okay, so why don't we start off with Mr. Bowman? Why don't you come up here, and you can address us briefly on this. We're about to approve it, but maybe you just give us a quick overview. Don't talk us out of it.
Thank you, worship, members of council. I'm glad to be here, and I heard some good news through Alex's work supporting Heartland Forest with the new bathrooms. It's been 13 years that we use Johnny on the spots, and I tell you, I have many stories on that because some kids just don't want, even adults, don't want to go there. So we're looking forward with the staff to work with us and getting this done. There's so many things going on at Heartland Forest. Right now, we're well over 20 employees, and for the summer, we look at over 30. So exciting things, and you read in the paper, a big difference we made in the last couple of weeks, the disabled veterans. And it was noisy in here tonight, but I had micred over 200, close to 300 kids at Heartland Forest on Sunday. So that, it's just amazing how we can help also other charities, nonprofit organizations. But as long as we can pay the bills, we're okay. You know, it's not, so. Many exciting things are happening. We're working hard and keeping the young, and I just love being there every day, sometimes 12 hours a day, but I do enjoy it, and I'm very grateful for your support. And we have our staff work with Alex, I presume. Looking forward to getting those bathrooms built and pull the Johnnys out of there. So again, thank you very much.
Dan, thank you for all that you do. We're lucky that you live in our community. We're very lucky you live here, thank you.
Matter of fact, I have to say, I wonder what Wayne is thinking tonight, because when I sat in his office a good 15 years ago, I didn't know what he was thinking, but I just told my story from the heart, and I don't know what he thought, really. And the same with Kim. You know, many years back, it's good 15 years, when I started with a dream, and look what we got now. Never imagined this building now. We had that million six given to us by the feds for the disabled community. 50,000 of these bathrooms is again from that same project. And then Mr. Smith from the Wise Guys are big supporters, and we have so many. This community has been overwhelming for Heartland Forest, volunteers, sponsors, donors. It's just, just amazing. I mean, we should be very proud of ourselves. Ken had a beautiful report on our city, but I tell you, I see it from the bottom up. And Wayne's wife is here from the school. The amount of kids we entertain after Joe's closed up, we started programs to take in those kids after high school, they got nowhere else to go. And we have taken them all in with special. And that takes a lot of effort, because you've got to have eyes all over the place. And, but we're making them so happy, and it's very rewarding for us. And I have a beautiful team helping me, so, and a family who supports me. So thanks again.
Thank you. Not only do you make the clients happy, but the caregivers too. They get a little bit of a reprieve, and I know that means a lot to them too. Counsel Ryan Nohem?
Thank you. Not only that, you have a great church that operates out of your Heartland Forest on Sundays. I just wanted to say, it takes a lot to become a major chains charity of choice. And it was amazing to go through lows and see that we could top up our dollars and the money go straight to Heartland Forest. So I have to say, congratulations, they've recognized the good work you're doing. And I could see people giving as they were going through, and they kept being asked. And when you got to the till, you saw it was for Heartland Forest. So I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great, Dan. All right, well, we're going to vote on it in just one half a second here. And then Counsel Crater, you've got TS 20, I'm sorry, Counsel Carrio, TS 2017-14, Coburn Street.
You wish I had a call that someone thought that the, number one, there was going to be a two-hour time limit. I don't see it that we're not establishing any time limit.
Make that motion, put it right in.
That there be a two-hour time limit, because they thought that on the one spot there might be a bit of abuse with staff and things. So I'd like to see that changed to a two-hour time limit on number one.
Okay, all right, that's seconded by Counsel.
That's it, that's all.
So we'll vote on that one first. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you for that. And we'll vote on all the rest of the consent agenda. Moved by Counsel Peter Angel, seconded by Counselor Campbell. All those in favor? And it's approved. Thank you very much, Dan. Have a great night. Thank you. Now really quickly, I'll run through the mayor's comments. First off, obituaries, first obituaries, retired fire captain Ted Shuttler and Daniel Joel Clement, brother of Corey Clement, transit bus operator. Our condolences go to their families. I'd like to thank Counsel Campbell for representing the city at the Coronation Annual Volunteer Recognition, as well as the Battle of the Atlantic Commemoration. Also like to thank Counsel Thompson for representing the city at the Niagara District Firefighter Association Monthly Meeting, Counsel Morocco at the 64th Annual Conference for Annual Ontario Smaller than Municipalities, and the Ambassador's Ball, the Niagara Folk Guards Festival. And Counsel Strange for Cover the Kids Run, hosted by the Bikers Rights Organization of Niagara. An update, I think everyone's aware, that Live with Kelly and Ryan Seacrest is going to be here in Niagara Falls. And you've seen earlier, best way to get tickets is to register on the Niagara Falls website that Dale and Teresa were talking about earlier. Our engagement tool. Pardon me? CKTV? What do you mean? Oh, oh, yes, of course, how could I forget? Oh my gosh. And Counsel Thompson, that's right, he did roundtable for the city. That was a couple of weeks ago, when it was in Niagara Falls at Willow Dell Golf Course. So he was on there with Noel Buckley from... Did I mention already, he likes me to mention twice, so. Okay, and great news, last week, we were up at Budget Lockup and made the announcement at the Budget that Niagara Falls is going to get a hospital, which is phenomenal news, we've been working for several years on that. And finally, it's itemized, right in the Budget, black and white Niagara South Hospital. We're very, very happy about that. Better healthcare, definitely here in Niagara Falls and in Niagara South. Moving on, and also, there was a reaffirmed commitment to the GO service right to Niagara Falls in the Budget as well. Arbor Day, we planted 40 trees that were replacing the diseased Emerald Ash trees that had to be removed at the Chippewa Lions Park. The annual Day of Mourning was in front of City Hall, the annual memorial for fallen workers. The Niagara Falls Professional Firefighter Retirement and Awards Event took place. Congratulations to all the Niagara Falls firefighters who were awarded, as well as the retirees. YMCA Healthy Kids Reading Event, I was joined by Counsel Crater, where we read stories to the kids and ate cake and drank Coke. McCappy Day, I was joined by Counsel Strange at McCappy Day, where it was the busiest, I understand, ever. They raised all sorts of money for Ronald McDonald House, which is fantastic. The Niagara Falls Citizenship and Immigration Ceremony took place recently in St. Mike's High School just this past week, where 30 new Canadians were welcomed into Canada as part of Canada 150 celebration event. part of Canada 150 Celebration Event as well. Doctors' Day Celebration took place recently at the Hilton, where we celebrated Niagara Falls doctors, and we honored all the good work that physicians do in our community. West Lane, congratulations to their DECA Team First Place showing. They won first place in Entrepreneurship Promotion Project category at the DECA International Career Development Conference held in Anaheim, California. Also, let everyone know, we have a Save the Casino Jobs effort taking place. It'll be a town hall type meeting, May the 17th at 7:00 PM at the Gale Center. That's May the 17th at 7:00 PM. It's organized by Good Jobs Niagara. Going to be joined by Chair Khaslin, MPP Gates, and hopefully, many of council colleagues will be there to support as well, that we send out a clear message that jobs in Niagara Falls and Niagara are valuable to our families and a priority to keep safe and secure. That'll be May the 17th, 7:00 PM at the Gale Center. And also, rescheduled first park opening. Originally, we had the park opening for Solar Park this past Saturday, May the 6th. Of course, it was rained out. We will have that new date now moved to May the 31st. So, again, Solar Park opening will be 4:00 PM on May the 31st. And lastly, our next council meeting will be Tuesday, June the 13th. And that ends the council notes. Moving on to our communications and comments of the city clerk. Number one, National Public Works Week requests that May 15th be proclaimed National Public Works Week in Niagara Falls, the week of May 15th. Moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Strange. All those in favor? That's approved. Item two, National Congress Italian Canadians Niagara Peninsula District celebrating their 7th Annual Italian Heritage Month, and they'd like to have a flag raising on June the 12th. Moved by Councilor Morocco, seconded by Councilor Campbell. All those in favor? That's approved. Minister Responsible for Senior Affairs has requested the month of June be proclaimed as Seniors Month in Niagara Falls. I thought we'd get seniors on council to do that one, but okay. Councilor Campbell, moved by Councilor Campbell? And seconded by Councilor Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. And lastly, Recreation of Parks Month proclamation, that the month of June be proclaimed Recreation of Parks Month in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Councilor Strange, seconded by Councilor Crater. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. He had his hand up first. Any additional items for council's consideration, Mr. Clerk? Do you? Hold on, Mr. Clerk. Did you want to comment on that one, Counselor?
Yeah, I, June is month for parks. Is that when we start working on them?
No, we already started. We already, well, last weekend.
I've had more. Of course, we had a lot of...
Oh, yes.
But we're always slow on starting at parks. How come we're always...
Well, this year, I can tell you, the rain, just today, they were cutting the hydro fields finally, because they couldn't get equipment, and I was told, because it's so soggy.
Snow fences.
Snow fences?
Yeah.
Well, that's Mr. Bowman's job. What did he do? Are we, well, snow fences have been coming down, aren't they, Mr. Bowman? Yeah, they're coming down.
I know, but there's no snow. Anyways, I had several call, and I walk out to my front door, and people attacked me about park cross in my place. What's the matter with you? It hasn't been touched. So, I'm just saying, I think we should look at our, when our starting time is. I appreciate the rain this, this year, but it doesn't seem that it's consistent every year. I think we got to start a little earlier with the parks.
Okay, thanks for that. But you're right, 92 millimeters of rain already fell in May, already. It's been, it's been pretty, pretty bad. But you're right, so, direction to staff? Okay, Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
Yes, Your Worship, there is one additional item. It was in tonight's handout, and that's for Taps Brewing Company requesting relief to the noise bylaw for various events. And in that handout, it does list the dates.
Motion by Councilor Campbell, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you for that. Ratification of in-camera items?
There is one ratification item. Just bear with me, I'll read this off. That the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute an agreement of purchase and sale to secure title to parts 1, 2, and 3 of reference plan 59R-15796, a parcel having an area of approximately 50 acres. That the consideration to be given for the entire parcel consists of two components. Firstly, for 30 of the acres of the parcel, consideration shall consent, sorry, shall consist of a tax receipt in the amount of $14,250,000, which would be for the 30 acres calculated at $475,000 an acre. Secondly, for the remaining 20 acres, a cash payment calculated at $550,000 an acre for a total payment of $11 million. Other terms and conditions to be set out in the offer of Jessapha Grassel, as executed by Ms. Grassel on May 2nd, 2017, and as is attached to this resolution. That the mayor and the clerk and other staff of the city of Niagara Falls be authorized to execute whatever documents are required to complete the purchase of the subject land.
Okay, we've got a conflict by Councilor Peter Angelo. Counselor Ainoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to speak to the motion. First of all, I'm going to vote against it, and I want to say why. I'm not anti-hospital, though that'll be how it's portrayed. In camera, I asked for two pieces of, of information, and that was the memorandum of understanding that was signed last November 3rd, 2016. And I asked for documentation stating that the NHS and the Ministry of Health had actually asked us to purchase additional land. I was given minutes of a meeting, but I was able to pull up my past communications from you, and you did provide us at one point, a letter from, I'm sorry, Suzanne?
Johnston.
Johnson. Who's Johnston, who said, yes, that's what the MO, the Ministry of Health was asking for, so I wanted to let you know, I did actually still have that. But this memorandum of understanding, I've never seen. I've pulled up, since we sat here, every resolution at council, I've pulled up our minutes, I've pulled up everything. There is nowhere that council voted for this memorandum of understanding. Now, it came to council on September 27th, and I know that because I wasn't here and neither were you. You were in Italy, I was in Tanzania. And I emailed staff and said, I wasn't in that meeting, can you provide us all the documentation that was provided to, to council? And we didn't get this. When you move through this memorandum of understanding, I will tell you, there's no way I would have supported this even if I had seen it. Because even as it was explained to this council, the bottom of this memorandum of understanding says that based on a satisfactory appraisal, the Grassels will donate 30 acres of its land in return for a tax receipt and the naming of at least one wing of the hospital as the Grassel unit, subject to the approval by the Niagara Health System. And that, they will agree to sell to the city of Niagara Falls the 20 additional acres. So, at no point have we ever been told that that was conditional, that the donation was conditional. And that's what this memorandum reads. And then it goes forth to say Niagara Falls shall make the best efforts to cooperate, assist, support, rezone the balance of the lands. Well, you've probably seen it, but we didn't. So, I don't know who supported the signing of this memorandum of understanding. It was never ratified in this council chamber. It was not provided to us. And I just think paying highest and best use on somebody else's appraisal, as opposed to using our appraisal that came in much lower than that, is, is wrong. I think that it, we should have kicked the offer back and said, hey, listen, this is conditional upon the hospital being built. To me, that protects the residents, that protects the spending of the money, that answers all the questions that I asked downstairs, and I'll ask here again. I want to be able to vote informed, to be told downstairs that I received this, and no, I never did, once I read it, is wrong. And I think that if we can't vote with the proper information in front of us, it's really hard to make an informed decision. And it's funny, because your commercial that Ms. Morton showed, the gentleman said, you can't read minds. Neither can I. So, I would not possibly know what was in this memorandum of understanding.
Why don't we get an answer then on this? Because I see Mr. Beeman...
Oh, I'm sure he is.
Counselor, I want to read from an in-camera report. I cannot do so unless you let me.
So moved.
Second.
So moved. Very well. I will read from in-camera report.
So, do we need a move? So, move, pardon me? Moved by Councilor Cario, seconded by Councilor Ainoni. All those in favor? Opposed? Or in favor?
I'll now read from the in-camera report, September 27th, 2016. This deals with the memorandum of understanding. The new memorandum of understanding outlines the following. Grassel family will donate 30 acres and sell the additional 20 acres at fair market value of the highest and best use of the property, as determined by an appraisal, appraiser retained by the Grassel family. Second part of the, what the, this report advises the memorandum of understanding will say. The city of Niagara Falls will make best efforts to rezone the lands retained by the Grassel family adjacent to hospital site for land uses which can take advantage of the presence of the hospital. Make best efforts to assist in the removal of any unnecessary requirements of the Niagara Regional Conservation Authority for the subject lands, ensure the municipal services reach the line of the retained lands, and make best efforts to ensure that the Niagara Gateway Economic Zone Community Center Improvement Plan remain in place throughout the development of the remnant lands. Members of council, it is unusual, the circumstances in which this transaction is taking place, but we were in an unusual situation. The city had secured the donation of 30 acres of land, was proceeding in good faith with the hospital, with the local hospital authorities, to prepare this land to be a hospital site. Discovered that, the NHS, the hospital system acquired a bigger parcel of land, and then had to go back to the DOLI, who now has us in a very precarious position. This land had been, was publicly represented as where the new hospital site would be. This land had been told to the provincial government and the NHS, this is where it would be. The NHS was selling it as the ideal place for there to be hospital. So, we have negotiated, the price has been proposed to us. The overall cost per acre of this transaction, given the terms, mayor was able to secure, are $220,000 an acre. Now, I'm the person who plays an A service, I'm the worst. So, I say, okay, let's go and we'll create the land, that's how we'll deal with these guys. The problem is, I have to beat 220 an acre. And based on the information I have, it's a consultation with the director of planning, this land is, if we end up inhering, it's going to be, its highest and best use is likely to be as residential land. Well, you can't get residential land for less than around 220 acres, so I'll spend half a million dollars on legal fees for you, and I'll end up at the same place. That's what this legal advice, I've given it to you here, because I said this downstairs, people seem to seem to want that to be up here, so that's what I'm doing. I unders, from a practical standpoint, I don't know how we're going to beat this. That's, I stand here as your lawyer, that's what I can tell you. Big weapon we have is the exorcration. Go grab it. The problem is, if, if highest and best uses as residential land, which is not on the slave, you're going to be converted to, we're going to pay the same amount. So, that's all that. But as far as this memorandum of understanding details of, were said in the report of September 27th, 216, right there on September 30th.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beeman. Mr. Todd?
And I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Mayor, that the portion of that report that Mr. Beeman read was circulated to every member of council. In your agenda package, in your in-camera envelope, every member of council had that report. The memorandum, Counselor, unfortunately, you weren't at the meeting, the memorandum was handed out at the meeting that night. That report, though, that contained those details was in every one of your packages that every one of these counselors receives. So, Mr. Mayor, the essence of this deal, as Mr. Beeman's indicated, is that council, by approving this motion, will be a two-part purchase and tax receipt. The end of the day, you will end up owning 50 acres of land that will then be turned over to the NHS for the construction of the hospital. Unfortunately, the price is not a price we all like, but it's the price we're going to have to pay to ensure this hospital gets built on the site that is proposed for. And Mr. Beeman will get this deal closed if council approves this, and the 50 acres will transfer into our ownership, and then we will have control of the entire hospital lands.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ainoni, then Morocco, and then Cario.
Well, that's wrong, because I did, I had asked for the information, and I didn't get it before this. And I pulled up all my emails, and quite frankly, I have about 35 that are unanswered from Mr. Todd right now. So, I didn't get an answer on that one either. But I will say this, I think this deal needs to be structured, that we do not spend $11 million if this hospital isn't guaranteed. I think that protects residents, I think that protects the council, and I think it answers all the questions. I think that condition should be in the, the offer to purchase, and that's that. So, I'm going to vote against the motion.
Okay, Counselor Morocco and Cario.
Yes, I do remember having this, it was not an email, because it was in camera, so it was in the envelope. And I remember the, the conversation, because all of a sudden, it was a little bit of a big shock to all of us, that we had the 30 acres, and now all of a sudden, we need 20 more acres to make this hospital. And the reason was, and I think that's important too, is that the province wanted to make sure that when this hospital has run its course and we need to do a rebuild, the land is there for a rebuild. So, I don't think that anybody is not supporting the hospital and this development. I think the surprise was to all of us, is that now we have to secure 20 more acres. Well, in the meantime, the very generous family that actually donated the 30 acres to us, went ahead and started to look at developing the land around them, and so, for their own purpose, because they're smart businessmen, why wouldn't they do that? So, then we have to come back, after they've already taken that into consideration at the development, and knowing that they can actually get residential development. We now tell them, we need 20 more acres for the hospital to happen. I think that, you know, they're business people, and unfortunately, we don't like the idea that we have to pay that price, but I understand their, their side as well, is that they've taken the rest of their land and looked at it as an economic impact to them and development for future growth, for what's going to go around the hospital. So, I, I think that, yes, we would like to see that clause, but I know that there's a MOU, there's actually the fact that if we can actually just get the land, because I truly believe that this hospital is going to be built, there is no doubt. This is a huge opportunity to have a state-of-the-art hospital, larger than the St. Catherine's facility, with centers of excellence here for our residents. There's no doubt that we need this hospital, and it has to happen. We need the 20 acres, we need the 50 to make it happen. And if it doesn't for some reason, we have 50 acres, as our legal advice has already instructed, and also, Alex has told us as well, that that land will be, will be able to sell at probably even more than that, because of the way the development is going in the housing industry and the growth in this area. There is no doubt. I think it is imperative, it is so important for us to move forward with this and see, and yes, I would like to say, I'd like them to go back again and negotiate and negotiate, put a clause in, but whatever, I think there's timelines, and I know that Ken can talk to this about what the ministry is expecting, because I think I've heard them downstairs, that they're breathing down our neck to get this project and to get this land approved. So, you know, I, I think we're still going to win at the end of the day. We're going to win with a, a brand-new hospital here, and if that doesn't happen, we'll have the land that we can resell and recoup those dollars. Is that correct?
It is correct. Thank you for that. Mr. Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want for the public to understand a little bit of the process, and thanks to Councilor Morocco for, for identifying some of it. This process started in around 2013, where the NHS, through the proposal of the hospital, identified that the hospital was going to be around the size of the St. Catherine's Hospital, and that's 700,000 square feet. They had identified at that time that we needed 30 acres, that this hospital could fit on 30 acres of land. So, that was 2013. So, that's the process that we entered into. The mayor contacted the Grassel family, had 30 acres of land donated. It wasn't until about two years later, in fact, I've got the minutes in front of me that was circulated to council. It was in December of 2015, two years later, that the, all of the hospital planning groups that our staff meets with on a regular basis came together, and they said, this hospital is going to be one-third larger than the St. Catherine's Hospital, it's going to be is gonna be one-third larger than the St. Catherine's Hospital, it's gonna be approximately one point two million square feet, it will not fit on thirty acres. We need to have about twenty acres more. So, the process was, through their development of all of their planning stage, more services, more product was coming to the site, which meant it was gonna be three to four hundred thousand square feet larger, which meant we needed more land. We at that point were already down the process. If we had have known right from day one, the mayor would have asked for a fifty-acre donation, not thirty-acre donation. But that's what we asked for, because that's what we were told, we were told we needed at the time. So now we're in a situation where we need fifty acres. The province has what's called a legacy plan, and this will ensure that this hospital remains in the city of Niagara Falls for, forever, because what happens is the legacy plan identifies the need to be able to replicate a new hospital on the same site forty or fifty or sixty years from now, while the existing hospital operates. And then when the new hospital opens, the old hospital on the same site is demolished, that becomes your parking area. So it's all contained on one site. So we can ensure through this investment tonight, if council approves this motion, that this hospital, once constructed, will remain in the city of Niagara Falls in perpetuity, because that's the way the plan is set up to happen.
Thank you. I've got councillor Kerrio and Crater.
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to say that, you know, we had a very lively debate downstairs about the pros and cons of the deal, and all of the council weighed in on it. Almost everything that I could think of to do with property transactions or deals or ideas were brought forward by one of us, and we were told that most of them had been discussed and talked about as much as they could be with the sellers. And, not that I like the price, but at this stage of the game, I wanna be a team player, it's time to come together now, get together. I'm not happy about the price, I'd like to be getting the fifty acres for nothing. But I think that the staff has done the best job that they could to, to get us to where we are today, and now it's time to come, come together and, and, and support this as much as we can. Ultimately, it's over a billion-dollar investment in our community, and I think that, you know, we'll have invested probably thirty million dollars and be right next to the, the best hospital facility in the region, maybe in the province. So, we've had the debate, we made our points, now it's time to get together as a group and support it, and try to do everything we can to get the project started. So I'm gonna support the motion, your worship.
Thank you, councillor. I've got councillor Crater, and then Strange.
Thank you, Worship. I sit here thinking, I know you've been working on this for five or six years, I know you have, but I recall when I first got elected as an MPP, I will tell you that probably seventy percent of my time was on healthcare. I don't know how many times that I was up in the premier's office saying, the Niagara Health System is dysfunctional. It's the only one in the province that has a system where one administration tries to run five different hospitals. It's the only hospital administration, that they were in debt when they created Niagara Health System. I remember all this, they were in debt for something like forty or fifty or sixty million dollars. And when they put them together, they left the debt there, and the Niagara Health System was trying to run a healthcare system and still trying to pay off this debt. And I pleaded with the government, pay the debt off, so that when we gave them all the money to deliver healthcare, they could spend it on healthcare, not have a portion going to try to pay off the debt that was created by a number of hospitals before the amalgamation took place. And it wasn't until, and I have to give this council credit, Fort Erie credit, Niagara on the Lake, when we collectively got together and kept going to the government saying, it's broken. And I can remember when Deb Matthews, as a minister, brought me into her office and said, how the hell do you say that I don't know that the Niagara Health System is broken? I'm telling you, Kim, it's a good system, it's working fine. And I remember I said to her, you don't live in this area, you don't know what it's like. But the end of the day, convinced the premier to bring in an independent investigator to look at the healthcare system. And the promise I made to Dalton was, if you bring him in and it's shown that the healthcare system is fine, then I will come out and support it. If it's shown that it's broken, then we've gotta fix it. And that's how we got to where we are. Am I excited about that? Yes. And I do remember after the investigation, all the work that was done to find the right location for a hospital in southern, in southern Niagara. And I remember getting the phone call from you, I do remember that, saying, gonna have a great announcement, and one of the biggest ones that we've ever had, but you say that about everything anyway. But I remember attending that special event that you had, where you announced that you had secured the land. And I will say, I remember sitting there thinking, wow, we really have a jump ahead of most, I think I said that to you, we have a jump ahead of most municipalities, because we have the land. And we didn't have to go to look for it, we didn't have to try to find money for it, we had somebody donating it. And everything, and I'm saying all this, because I, I sit downstairs, I want the public to understand clearly how, the position that this council was in. Everything was going along good, we had the land, I was there when we did the announcement, and the community was excited, and Fort Erie came on board, they were part of it, that was great to see, because they were opposed to everything, they've come on board. What's happened for the public to understand is, all of a sudden, all of a sudden, though they're clear blue, the province has said to this municipality that the land you have is not big enough. It's not that it's not big enough to build the hospital on, it's not that it's not big enough to have the parking spaces, it's that we have this new policy that says, and as Mr. Todd explained, that you can't just have the land for your hospital, you've gotta have extra land, so when the time comes to redevelop for a new hospital, you can move over there and keep this one going. So here we are, around the table, trying to figure out, what are we gonna do, and we find ourselves, at the end of the day, this is where it's frustrating, we find ourselves going to the taxpayers and saying, not only did you contribute twenty million dollars as part of our contribution for the new hospital, and Fort Erie is contributing some, not only that, but now you have to go and find more land in addition to the land that you were able to secure as a donation, and now that land's gonna cost the taxpayers of Niagara Falls another eleven million dollars. I have never seen, in all the years I was at MPP, that municipality is gonna have to put in twice. I never saw this, this, I saw hospitals built when I was there, I never saw this legacy policy that they had, but apparently, as Mr. Todd explained to us, it's a new policy that the government has come up with, they want this additional land. So that's what the position we're in, and I sit downstairs, I didn't vote in favor, but I said, I wanna be sure that at least the public, when we walk out into the street, and I go to Tim Hortons, or wherever you are, and somebody says, why would you spend eleven million dollars on top of the twenty million dollars for this new hospital? When does it end for Niagara Falls? And I want him to understand how we got and why we're in this position. The province of Ontario has forced us to have to buy twenty, they have forced us. This government has forced us to go back to the taxpayers of Niagara Falls and say, twenty million dollars is not enough, you gotta give us another eleven million dollars, because that's the owners of the land, that's what they feel they're entitled to. But I will say, they made a donation, you got the donation, that was a significant contribution. So, downstairs, I didn't vote in favor, again, because I wanted it upstairs, so everybody would hear where we are, and if we're supporting it, then they understand why. And we did, Alderman Kerrio's correct, we really had a very lively, that's a nice way of phrasing it, we had a very exciting debate downstairs. So, you know, I've sat here and listened to everything, and, and I'm gonna support it. And, but at least, and I think a couple of us said it, at least the public has heard clearly why we're in the position we're in. So I'm gonna close with saying, I feel like I have this gun to my head. We, you know, I am not being critical, because I know how many hospitals are needed in the province of Ontario, and I think Alderman Morocco said, and I agree with her, you don't wanna miss that opportunity. Wes Lincoln has been waiting ten or fifteen years for their hospital, they haven't got it. And if we miss the opportunity, we may not, it may never come back. So I'm gonna support it, but at least the residents now understand why we're spending another eleven million dollars. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Kerrio?
Just a quick, I forgot to ask a question, I wanted to ask the solicitor. When the clerk was reading about the tax receipt, do we have any liability on the amount of the tax receipt, Mr. Solicitor, if it's challenged, and for some reason, the amount that we have given them for tax receipt?
It will be arranged so that we have no liability on the-
On the tax receipt, okay, thank you.
The entire matter will be up to them to defend the tax receipt.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Strange, you make the motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, like councillor Crater and councillor Kerrio said, we were in a lengthy conversation down below, and, and doing the math, and, you know, being a real estate agent, coming up with the amount of money you want to actually spend on, on acreage, and, you know, we're down there, it kinda didn't seem right. But the, the thing is, we gotta look at the positive part of this, and we're getting an unbelievable hospital on this land. It's so happened that that land is going to be worth that amount, it really is. We're gonna see that ripple effect that you always talk about, and we see it in Niagara Falls right now with the residential area, and it's just booming. We're running out of room for houses. And you're gonna see with that hospital being built there, the ripple effect of not only residential, but commercial along that highway corridor as Niagara Falls is growing and growing. And it's gonna be a great added addition to have this awesome hospital in, in Niagara Falls. So we really wanna look at the positive side, I know it's gonna, it's gonna cost a little bit than astronomical money, it's, it's gonna be an astronomical, astronomical amount of money. But in the end, we've got to prove, we've been fighting for this, and you see councillor Crater talking about Wes Lincoln, how they've been trying to fight for fifteen, twenty years getting a hospital. Now we've got the hospital in the, in the south end, and you're gonna see that side of Niagara Falls just grow dramatically, and I'm, I'm sure spaces like Niagara Square and stuff, you're gonna see kind of rebuild, big box stores going there, so it's gonna re, rebuild that part of our city too. So congratulations to yourself, Jim, Ken, Todd, and yourself, Belsetti, for getting the hospital here.
Thank you. Councillor Strange, or councillor Kerrio?
I make the motion, your worship.
Okay, moved by councillor Kerrio, seconded by councillor Morocco, that we approve the in-camera, is that right, Mr. Clerk, that we approve the in-camera direction? Is that, did you-
One additional thing, I believe it was council support for councillor Kerrio's proposal, that the agreement includes stipulation that we're not, that we're not-
Not liable by the defense-
Right.
-of the CRA, that the CRA is entirely in the hands of the Grasso family.
Okay, so we've got that amendment, agreeable that amendment? We'll call the vote, all those in favor, okay, and opposed, with one opposed. And you know, you're right, this is, I'm, I'm excited about this, because yes, it's not cheap, we gotta buy the land, and we're gonna make contribution to the hospital, but in the end, there's gonna be a billion-dollar investment by the province, this is gonna be huge, gonna be huge. Now, bylaws, Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to tonight's?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay? Looking for a motion to introduce the bylaws?
No motion.
Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Campbell, that the bylaws be given a first reading? All those in favor? Oh, did I miss, yeah, we did the resolution?
Yeah, we can go back.
Oh, we'll go back and do it, sorry. Councillor?
I'd like to put myself down as opposed to bylaw twenty seventeen dash fifty-six.
Okay. Fifty-six. Okay, we'll call that vote, all those in favor with, yep, councillor, yep?
The same.
Same one, okay.
Thank you.
Councillor Ainoni, councillor Crater are opposed to that bylaw, twenty seventeen fifty-six, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, with the exception of two?
The bylaws, two thousand seventeen dash fifty to two thousand seventeen dash sixty, you read it first time?
Bylaws be given a second and third reading, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Campbell, all those in favor? Okay, and resolution, we have a resolution here, I'm sorry that I missed, therefore be resolved, that council consent to an exemption to the two-year waiting period for minor variances and thereby allow Mountview Homes Niagara Limited to file an application to the city's committee of adjustment for the development of the old field of state phase four vacant land condominium that is regulated by bylaw number twenty sixteen one-one-two. Moved by councillor Strange, seconded by-
What does that mean?
What does that mean?
Yeah.
Mr. Beaman?
The recent amendment to the planning act made it such that you can't apply for a minor variance on a site specific, when a property's rezoned. The owner cannot apply for a minor variance for a period of two years unless council grants permission. And the idea of this was for, for one, we had one that councillor Morocco was intimately involved in, you recall, the property, Mr. Baymont's property on McLeod Road, where council had a highly debated rezoning, and then they were back asking for a minor variance less than a year later. That sort of thing had over the years ranked with municipal councils, and so they've asked for some relief, and that's what this is about. In this case, it has been controversial, so I don't see why-
Okay, so that was, I'm sorry, was that moved by, moved by councillor Strange, seconded by councillor Morocco? All those in favor of the resolution? Okay, and that's approved. Now, for new business, I'm gonna switch here with councillor Peter Angelo, we're gonna switch seats here, I've gotta be somewhere. Excuse me, thank you. Thank you for your support on the hospital.
You spilled some water.
Side first. Side first.
Always this side first. Okay, new business, I have councillor Ainoni.
Thank you, thank you councillor Peter Angelo. I, I just wanted to highlight, we've got one of our own local hometown boys playing in the NHL right now, actually Ottawa Senators are winning tonight, but I just wanna say, we have not taken the opportunity to congratulate or invite Ben Harper here to our council, who played in our minor midget Niagara Falls AAA. Then he went on to the Wolf Storm, the Barry Colts, the Bingham Senators, and now Ottawa Senators. His parents are very, very proud, and, but I was watching the other day thinking, we've never had him here to congratulate him. And he's one of our own Niagara Falls minor hockey, minor hockey players. So I'd like to make a motion that, once the NHL season is finished, or Mr. Harper's season is finished, that we invite him to council and congratulate him on his accomplishments.
Sounds good. Okay, I have a motion by councillor Ainoni.
Well, I was hoping that, I was going there, I don't wanna jinx anything. Yeah, I don't wanna jinx anything when they win the cup, but you don't wanna really put that, that jinx on them. But I would really like us to bring him here, invite him here, and have council recognize him and congratulate him.
Good job. I have a motion by councillor Ainoni, seconded by councillor Morocco, to invite Mr. Harper to council, all those in favor? Opposed motions carried, thank you. I have councillor Crater.
Thank you, your worship, I have two items. I brought this item, I think, once, no, at least twice before, so I'm gonna bring it up a third time. That is, on Drummond Road, those railroad tracks cross from the Bingo Hall. I think since I last brought it up, the tracks have sunk another half a foot.
Yeah, they're pretty bad.
And there are people that are bottoming out with their cars. A number of the businesses along Drummond Road called me again and said, you know, we have businesses here, and how can you allow the railway to allow the tracks to keep sinking? So I would just like one more motion again, to get our staff, whoever else, to go back to the railway and come back with either a definite yes or a definite no, so we can tell the residents that we're trying to get that straightened out. Am I correct, we have no rights over that, either they're gonna do it or not? Any legislation that we can force? Because it's become, I'm telling you, it's become unsafe out there.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's very-
You drive at a normal speed, you can't.
I know.
You cannot drive at a normal speed. When the buses go over there, I've had a couple of bus drivers tell me the same thing about going over those tracks.
Oh, for sure. I think we have to do something, and I know that there was a plan a few years ago to actually redo Portage Road and Drummond Road, although I'm not sure where we are with that. Maybe Mr. Holman can give us an update, and then let us know if, when we redo Drummond Road, whether or not we'd be able to drop the grade a little bit sooner, so that when you're going over, you're not going over as your car slanted downhill, you're actually going over level. That would be ideal, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair, thanks for the question. We'll have a look and see if there's something we can do on an interim basis. In 2016, this council approved the design money for the reconstruction of that section of Drummond Road. And the grade on the north side of the road is very steep, involves having to drop the road, which affects driveway entrances, which affects the cover on the water main, and a number of other design issues. Having said that, we have every confidence that we're gonna be able to fix it, it's just what do we do in the short term? We could spend some money to adjust the grade and, and try and make it a little bit easier to cross those tracks. But we'll get something from CN in writing as to what options they would consider as part of our design. And then it may involve some additional cost sharing on our behalf, we can bring that information back to you.
Okay, so with design in 2017, then would we be looking at construction in 2018?
Yeah, hopefully we'll have an accurate cost estimate that we'll bring back during our capital budget deliberations for next year.
Okay.
That's great, thank you very much. The last item I have is, I am the, the council's rep on the main and ferry BIA, and I was at their, their AGM, and they've asked me if I would bring something forward. I've had a bit of discussion with Mr. Drennitt, to do, to do with our parking and traffic department. So what's happened up there, Main Street is the hub, and we all know what that means, the buses all stop along there and pick up and move on to different parts of the city. They've added another bus into the hub. So what you basically have is the bus is right in front of the businesses. In fact, one of the businesses there is saying that she's gonna be moving, you've got buses all along there. The fellow that owns the laundromat, I was at a meeting with him and the, the police, and Mr. McCafferty, and some of the BIA, and what he's running into is because the bus is there and the people-
is there, and the people get off the bus, and while they're waiting to go into his laundromat to take his coins, that he's got machines there. So they want to see if they could have one more meeting with Mr. Drenness, with the city, to see if there's another alternative location for the hub. Does it have to be right in front of the businesses on, one of the business persons said, you know, if they park the buses like that in front of the casino, a heck of a breakout. But in our little Main Street, and they spend a pile of money down there on Main Street, millions fixing it all up, and to have all the buses lined up there. And I do understand, I will say this, I understand why there are more buses being put out along there, and that's because we're trying to get to that half hour service, so to ensure we have enough buses at the hub, they've added one more on. So I just want a very simple motion, just to ask Mr. Drenness and his staff to meet with Ruth Ann and the BIA to see if there's another location or some other plan. They suggested maybe national groceries grow along there, they said that, I'm sure they could work something else. That would allow the businesses to continue operating on Main Street without having buses all lined up in front of them, and then the fumes, I was out there today and I saw. So I'm not being critical of parking and traffic, not being critical of the buses, I'm really trying to help the businesses out there who are trying to make a go, so I'd make that a motion.
So you're looking for a motion to have Mr. Drenness meet with the main ferry BIA?
With BIA, and I'd be happy to attend with him.
Absolutely.
And I'd second that motion as well.
You'd second that motion as well, okay, do I have a third? I'll need a second there for the motion. Councillor Strange, thank you very much, I'll call the vote, all those in favor? And the motion's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councillor Morocco?
Yes, thank you. Actually, just a couple of things that I just wanted to give an update on. I actually did attend, as the mayor indicated, Osom, Ontario's small urban municipalities last week, in Blue Mountain, and it was very interesting, they had a number of great topics, from Bill 68 to Obison versus, integrity commissioner, sorry, I'm getting started. But I thought one thing that was very important that they touched on, one of the sessions, and I'd like to share some of the information with the staff, is the shared economy, which is, covers Airbnb, and Uber, and taxis, and how they deal with that, and it was very interesting to see that Blue Mountain really has it, it's taken two and a half years in some of those counties out there, about how they deal with Airbnb, and businesses, Airbnbs in residential areas, and how they've actually mandated that. One of the things, so they actually charge a fee, there's bylaws and whatever that are done, so I would like to actually pass that on to the staff to actually connect with them, and their city staff said that they'd be more than willing to meet with our staff or send any information, I mean, why should we spend all our staff time on something that's already creating and working good for other municipalities? So I think that that's really something that has been on the back of our mind, how we deal with that. It's also, they've made it also a revenue generator too, so that they're also paying their fair share too, for services, because they say with these Airbnbs in residential, you know, it's like extra police, it's extra garbage, it's extra all these services, so they should have a responsibility to the municipality. So that was good. And they also talked about the, let me see what they say about the, you know, don't limit to the number of taxis, I think, but one thing is with the, instead of chasing Uber around forever, just regulate them. Another one that's kind of popping up is RideCo, so there's more of these that are coming into play, and I think it was sad because the taxis are upset because I think they get charged on the first kilometer. The Ubers don't get charged a taxing fee until after 30,000 kilometers, which really isn't fair, because a lot of the taxi drivers are, so it was a huge learning opportunity for me to actually share this information with our staff as well. And then on another note, today, representing the Greater Niagara Airport, district airport, we flew up to Simcoe, a group of us, there was eight, a couple of regional, regional people, staff went, Carmen, CEO Carmen DeAngelo, Dave Oakes from the region, and another regional person as well, Len Cade, the CEO from our airport, Terry Flynn, another councillor, myself, and Robin Garrett, who's the vice president, vice chair. So we went up to, for the announcement of the airports throughout, there's 11 total that have decided to get together and start working on growth and development in their areas, and they actually want to form this network, and it's called Introducing the Southern Ontario Airport Network. And that airport is, consists of the Toronto Pearson Airport, Billy Bishop, Hamilton, Kingston, Lake Simcoe, London, Oshawa, Niagara District Airport, Peterborough, Waterloo, and Windsor, are all working together to take a plan to the province to talk about how we're going to grow, and how each and every one of our airports will have a special niche in it. And we're also looking to start approaching our college and university to look at aviation training, so that we can be prepared for the growth and development in all of our airports, as well as tourism, and the movement of cargo and goods, so that we'll hopefully bring in another component to create more jobs in our area too. So it's great that that was a great announcement that was done in Simcoe, so we took a quick 25-minute flight up there, and then back today in time for council. So I just wanted to share those notes, and that is on the media, probably on the TV tonight as well. So Toronto was very eager to work with all these other airports because they are maxing out, they are the hub, huge hub airport, and they're outgrowing their ability, so they are looking to connect into other municipalities to help with their airports, and Niagara District is one of those. So I was very proud of that announcement. Anyway, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Any other new business on this side? Well, you usually have 14, 15.
He was running his own business.
I'd like to- Poke in the bear.
Congratulate the clerk's department, I'm putting out the agenda on Wednesday.
I asked if it was April Fools.
Pardon me?
I asked if it was April Fools when we got it, but it wasn't.
Anyway, it was great, and I think if we can be consistent with that, makes it a little easier to get through all the reading.
Any other new business? Councillor Campbell?
Yes, your acting worship, two things. Heart Niagara left me with a whole bunch of cooking books here, and they're for all the members of council, and it looks like there'd be stuff left over for staff as well, there's a fair number of books. Second, I think that the smoke detector and carbon monoxide detector awareness campaign that the fire department is presently undertaking is extremely important. Why? I think it's extremely important that we ensure that all of our citizens are protected. However, it would appear from the feedback I have received recently from many citizens and landlords in our community, there does not appear to be a consistent approach with respect to how the fire department handles first-time offenders. If the purpose of this week's campaign is to make citizens aware of the importance of smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and all fire safety requirements being in place, why aren't we focusing on compliance rather than prosecution? Your acting worship, I would make the motion that staff provide a report that compares our fire department's enforcement procedures with other communities in the Niagara region with respect to their position on the concept of compliance versus prosecution. Can I remove that?
Seconded through the motion, seconded by councillor Karyo. Any debate at all? Councillor Ainoni?
Just a question, are we going to allow the firefighters to speak that evening too, or the chief to speak that evening too? Like, you want staff to give a presentation, and the chief is going to speak to it also?
No, answer a report.
I'm sure the chief will have to present a report.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Any other questions at all to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, motions carried, thank you. Any other new business? Councillor Strange?
To you, Chair, to Jeff Holman, is there any update on the Harvard Avenue? I know it's been raining like crazy, and I've seen the water level, the water tables been up through the whole Niagara region. Just, I'm just in that neighborhood, and a lot of neighbors have been asking me, I've seen a lot of city trucks in there for, I don't know, at least the last three, four weeks, and just any update or timeline when everything is going to be fixed there?
Mr. Chair, thanks for the question. Councillor Strange, we've had our staff out there all weekend monitoring flows in the sewer, and making sure that the pumps are operational. Consultants on board, we have a schedule for the geotechnical investigation, which is kind of critical to the design here. We should have that information by the end of the month, complete the design, and then be in a position to come back to you with construction tender bids for your consideration, probably for the July meeting, in which case we start construction and we'll recomplete sometime towards the end of August. That's the best-case scenario, councillor, but it's just going to take that amount of time. And in the meantime, we'll be babysitting the system, make sure it works, and providing regular updates to the Let's Talk communication tool that you heard about tonight, as we hit certain milestones.
Thank you.
Any other new business? I had one item, I had asked about it in camera, and then Mr. Beeman had said to bring it up here. All of council would have received an email in regards to BIA procedures, and I guess what is, what is legal, what is not legal? And I guess I was going to, under new business, ask for a report from our solicitor, based on what City Hall perceives to be legal procedures as opposed to illegal procedures. And then I guess Mr. Beeman would write that report to council. I think that City Hall has a responsibility really to oversee the actions of the BIAs, because we're the ones that are responsible for approving their budgets, so we should weigh in on whether or not we feel that everything that they're doing is appropriate in nature. So if someone could make that motion, that Mr. Beeman write a report to council, based on the previous email that we received.
I don't know what you're suggesting, you have to, something that the BIAs are doing-
No, we received an email from one of the BIA members saying that, you know, the BIA shouldn't be allowed to do this, and I don't really want to bring it out, but I know that all of council has received it, and I had passed that over to Mr. Beeman, and he said it's probably best to put it in a report to council.
Yeah.
That's all. Okay, I have a motion by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Crater. There's no other questions or comments, all those in favor? Opposed, motion's carried, thank you. If there's no other new business, then we're adjourned. We'll see you in June.